Good morning. We'll call the city council meeting Wednesday, August 12th to order. Let's see. Would you join us with invocation and pledge allegiance? Who would like to do the invocation?
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity for us to gather this morning. We ask your blessings and your continued blessings on our fair city and all of the employees and the citizens that reside here. We also ask your intervention for those who are suffering with COVID and all of their families. So we ask that you give them speedy healing and give comfort to their families if they've lost loved ones.
Oh, God.
We ask all these things in your name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve a minutes from June 10th meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now, we're on to Z1. Good morning, Kyle. Go ahead. I think I do have one, two, three, four cards on this.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning, Kyle.
This is a zone change request from R1A, single family, and R1B, single family, to PUR, Planned Unit Residential District. The applicant intends to develop 50 townhome units on this property. This will help implement the goal of adding 3,000 more households to the north end. That's a goal from the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan. This property is located in Council District number three. The surrounding properties are generally developed with single-family homes or vacant property. To the east are single-family, are developed. To the west and south are currently undeveloped. The original request was for R1D, which is...
I can hear yourself talk.
Yeah.
I was hearing you twice. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the original request was for R1D, which is a single-family attached. The city council on April 22nd tabled this item so that the applicant can prepare a site plan with PUR zoning. So the Planning and Zone Commission recommended approval of the R1D request. But when it came to city council, there was concern about the actual layout of the property. And so it was requested that the applicant prepare a site plan through PUR. And so they've done that here. Site plan proposes 25 buildings with total in 50 units on individually-planted lots. So these would resemble duplexes, but they would be individually, or they could be individually owned because they would be subdivided into individual lots. The proposed density is 6.6 units per acre. The proposed setbacks are 20 feet front yard, 10 feet rear yard, and 10 feet between buildings. And the homes will be limited to 42 feet in height, and they will be single-story. The site plan proposes a private street which will align with Willowbrook Trail to the south. One of the concerns last time was the alignment with the street across Garden Valley, Garden Valley Road. And so the applicant has came back, they own that property as well, and they plan to develop it similar to this. And so they've came back and realigned that road. So there won't be any offset between that street and this street. Site plan is slightly different than what council had in their packets. The difference between the two is on the northeast corner there, the applicant has provided a turnaround for Rosemont Drive. Since these will be private streets, the applicant was to provide at least some sort of logical terminus for Rosemont. And so the public, coming down that, it's currently a dead-end street. If they, once this is developed, they will have the ability to turn around and not be stuck at the dead end. The site plan proposes two access points for ingress and egress, which are on the south side and the northeast side. And then a third access point for emergency access only, which would be on the, going out to Shawnee Boulevard. Staff has reviewed the site plan and finds that it meets the criteria for approval. Of the 27 notices that were sent, number returned in favor to the site plan. We did have quite a few responses in favor to the R1D proposal. And those were from the applicant and from some of the family members there. The, of the notices, we did receive one in opposition from the, of the property owners within the 200 feet, which is just under 1%, they were, under .1%. They were mostly concerned with the possibility of having mobile homes on these lots, which zoning would not allow for mobile homes. These would have to be site-built homes. With that, like I mentioned before, the Planning and Zone Commission recommended approval of this request. They recommended approval of R1D zoning, which compared to the PUR, which would be less restrictive than what's being proposed here today. So, and like I mentioned, the staff has reviewed the site plan and finds that it fits the criteria for approval.
And what was the last action of the council approval?
It was to, the last action was to table.
Table.
Table it until the applicant has site plan prepared. And they were able to realign the street on the south side of Garden Valley. And so there's no street jog or offset. And so they've corrected that. So this street will align right across the road from the street to the south.
What's the cost of these homes, the range?
The developers here, they can answer that question.
Yeah, we have...
So while he's looking, I have one more question. So it was never approved by planning and zoning? It was tabled?
The, R1D was approved. The PUR with the site plan, no. It was not, they didn't feel the need to require the applicant to do a site plan. So Planning and Zone Commission has not reviewed the site plan, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I think.
Mr. Mayor, just for technicalities, since it was tabled by the council before, can you give a vote on table to put it back on for this?
Sure. Okay, so entertain a motion to move this off the table and have a discussion item on it.
Send it.
Second, I have a motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, so we have four cards. And they're the applicant and someone that's against it. So you want to go ahead and start listening to them? The first is Jack Fears. Jake Fears, I'm sorry. I said Jack. State your name and address for the record.
Senator, may I have a time?
Do we have a time? Yeah, let's, can we do three minutes? Because we're gonna have, there's gonna be plenty of follow-up questions, so let's just go ahead and do three minutes.
Absolutely. Good morning, council members, mayor. My name is Jake Fears. I'm a civil engineer representing the developer, and we're associates located at 121 South Main, Henderson, Texas. I'm here in support of the PUR that's presented to you today. Like I said, at city council, or at P&amp;Z, we went with an R1-D zoning, which basically accomplished the units we're trying to provide in this area. However, the city had some access issues that we had to work around. In order to fit all that into the site plan, at that time, it was better to change the zoning to the PUR to accommodate some of those requests. And as Kyle had mentioned, we realigned the main entrance off of Garden Valley to align with the development to the south per the traffic engineer's request. Also, at Rosemont Drive, which is to the northeast up there, we provided a permanent turnaround so that property no longer dead ends, also providing stacking for the site as you enter. Through that process, I think initially, we had about 56 units. And making those edits and changes that the city had requested, I think we're now proposing only 50. So we've made some concessions in order to meet all the requirements the city had. As far as, again, I'm the civil engineer representing this project. We've looked at utilities, access to the property. And I think we've done a good job of addressing all of the city's concerns through this back-and-forth process through site plan. And I think we've come to a conclusion that we have a product that the city likes. And so I'm available for any technical questions you may have.
Great, thank you. We might have some. Is there any questions about engineering yet? Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to the next speaker, Michael Gazettet. State your name and address, please.
My name is Michaelie Gazettet. I'm an attorney here in Tyler. And my office is at 100 East Ferguson, Suite 1000, Tyler, Texas 75702.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the developer today. I have noted what my client has done with respect to working with the city planning officials in formulating this in a way which is very good for the area, good for Tyler, maximizing the number of single-family homes that can be put on this land. And, you know, this development stands on its own. My client is committed to this particular development. There's nothing else that needs to be done in order to proceed with work on this development. So we would request that the council approve this today to allow work to begin.
Thank you. Next card, Gaylord Huey. State your name and address for the record, please.
Gaylord Huey, 305 Farah Place, Tyler, Texas. I want to thank each of you for your service. I'm humbled by your service today and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I've got one question for Kyle to clarify the, this particular tract. I represent Willowbrook Country Club. We are engaged in a couple of, this is a protest in a couple of different tracks, I believe. And Kyle, is this one of the tracks that the club protested? It is?
Well, yeah, go ahead and make your statement. We'll bring him back up to clarify.
Well, thank you. If it is, you know, the club's here to protect its property. We support the development. Okay? But we, when we support the development, we need to protect our property. And it's a drainage and siltation issue. You know, it's very, you know, common in our community. And we've got a resolution that we've, we'd like to present to the council if it's appropriate today. And we've worked hard with Mr. Wasson, and hopefully it's a simple approach and something that the council might see the wisdom in. So I'll come back up later. Thank you.
Do you have a resolution? Is that what you just said?
Yes, I'm happy to present that.
Yeah, please do. Kyle?
Kyle, can I put this in front of the...
Yeah, let's...
Yeah, that's the reason I raised the issue. And, but the development, there was some, the allegation was, there was, among the engineers, that there was siltation and runoff associated with this part of its development. So we filed a protest accordingly. We've worked hard over the last several weeks. We've, and you'll see on the plat, the plat is not, as far as I know, is not being contested in terms of what the club and Mr. Wasson, the developer, has presented to each other. And we are tied up on one technical issue. And it has to do with what, if anything, can be done with a, inside a natural greenbelt. We've accommodated, as far as we know, every need of the developer. But we need the council's clarification in terms of if it's going to be a natural greenbelt. So whether or not you can go in and disturb the surface, which in our estimation would defeat the purpose of the greenbelt, which is to slow the runoff, catch the siltation, coupled with the drainage ditch that we've, you'll see on the map, or on the plat there. We think that's a reasonable solution. We want the development to go forward. We want to get this, get Mr. Wasson started out there. But again, we need the council's guidance in terms of...
So, okay, well, we hear you. And Mr. Wasson's up next. Let's hear from him.
Can I ask, I'm still kind of trying to determine, this development is on the east side of Garden Valley Road.
Right.
So how close is that to the Willowbrook property?
I don't have the engineer with me, but Kyle, you have an approximate. It's part of the watershed. The engineers, as far as I know, all agree it is part of the watershed, and there would be runoff. But we wanted to catch this early because it is a planned unit development. And this is our shot, if we're gonna address it. And like I said, I don't think we're asking for a lot here.
Well, then, let me, let's have Mr. Wasson come up, and let's go ahead and have his statement, and then ask him if you're...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The council women's house is probably about four to five miles.
My, that's...
Is that right?
About that.
Then, is that right, Kyle?
Yeah, why don't you work on that when Mr. Wasson's coming up? And we'll call Kyle back up for clarification.
Well, if that's the case, I'll withdraw my comments, and we'll reserve those for another day. There's no use taking the council's time up on this issue.
Well, yeah, let me, let's have Mr. Wasson come up, and then let's figure all this stuff out. Hello, sir. How are you?
How are you?
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jack Wasson. I'm the owner and the developer of the property that we're here to consider today, which is what we call Garden Valley North. It's not there that you go. This is a site plan that has been put on hold for several months in order for us to work with planning to come up with a site plan for this particular property, a PUR property that we could, that the planning could support, and that would be, allow us to go ahead with our development. That time has, we've taken the time since the council asked us to do this. We spent a lot of time back and forth with the city. And everyone has agreed that this is a good site plan, and that's what we're here to do, to consider today. If we try to conflate the many complexities of other projects and other whatever, this is at least 2,000 feet north of the property that was being addressed a while ago. I'm grateful that Mr. Huey agreed that that was not a problem, an issue that they had a problem with, this particular property. My engineer is here and will state that there is no water runoff issue that affects Willowbrook in any, any possible way. The water that does discharge from this property goes in a completely different direction. So since we're here to talk about this property today and hopefully get this site plan approved and let this project move forward, and it stands on its own. The issue with this property is, it is 50 units. The lender has required that this be, I want to make it clear, this is, we anticipate the day when we will be able to sell these units. But, and that's why we have subdivided it and provided for individual ownership of each unit. These townhomes match Garden Valley South. That is 55 or 54 units at this point. This project has the same floor plan, same building plan, as Garden Valley South, which has already been approved by both planning and zoning, and has been platted and has been approved by the council. Now, we're here about this one, which would double the size. My lender felt that the project was too small, that the 50 townhomes was not sufficient. They wanted to see it larger. And when the opportunity presented itself to acquire the property directly across the street, which is unique, it just happened that way. It fell in our lap. The lender said, "We strongly recommend, we thought this was too small. We strongly recommend that you increase the number of units here and make this 110, 112, 120, whatever you can get. We want to see this as a larger project. We think there's a better, that's a better commitment to this neighborhood and to this, the future of this property." So this is Garden Valley North, we call it. Willowbrook Trail runs north and south here, and it connects. And I have a flash drive that shows how these two connect, if you're interested, and if you're able to put that up. I don't know whether you are.
Well, I mean, it's really...
Not necessary. Okay.
Well, I mean, it's...
The road here...
Yeah, I'm gonna get some clarification from Kyle here in just a second.
Okay, okay. I do have the intersection of Garden Valley North here and Garden Valley South to show how they come together. I have it on the plat map. It's on there.
It's, yeah, let me get some clarifications from Kyle on something before we start pulling up other stuff. Because I do have a question.
Do you want me to sit down? I mean, do you want Kyle to come?
You're welcome to sit down, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you very much. I didn't, I don't want to ask you to sit down like that. Okay, so Kyle.
Yes.
I'm confused. We have seen this project once before, and we requested it to go back to get clarification as a council, and we've done that.
That's right.
And so there's another track that's out there that has not been seen by council yet. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's a couple, so...
There's a couple more tracks.
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, give me an idea. Try to help my mind for a minute. Tell me what we're...
So if we could go back to the zoning map really quick? Okay, so to the south, that was approved probably last year or so.
Yeah.
And that's where R1D, it's pretty much the same type of development that Mr. Wasson's trying to do here. To the, to the west of that, there's, you can see the, kind of the tip of that 15-acre track there.
Yep.
That's what Mr. Huey had pulled up here. That's still going through, through the Planning and Zone Commission process. It was tabled. Or actually, it was denied at their last meeting this last week. And...
I think I read about that.
Right.
But that's why I was really kind of confused why it was on this agenda for, but...
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not on this agenda. I think what Mr. Huey was trying to convey was that the Country Club, they did send a letter in in opposition of what we're talking about today, but it was not...
On this one?
That's right.
But...
That was a concern of drainage.
The water issue, the water issue is in the track to the west?
To the south, yeah. That's really...
I mean, it's this...
The pink.
It's adjacent to the pink.
Just to the left of the pink area, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And so that, that's about, well, Willowbrook Country Club is about 15, 17, 15 to 1700 feet from this area here.
Okay, but that's where the retention pond's gonna be?
Right. Right, on that track to the south.
On that other track.
Yeah.
So the greenbelt on this one is at the very back as it goes. Yeah, put up the plat for this one again, real quick. Or I think I have it here.
So this is that 15-acre track, like I mentioned, was...
And that's coming to us next time.
That's right, yeah. It was, so that was denied by planning last week, and it's been appealed.
So is one connected to the other? If one can't be developed, the other one can't be developed?
According to the developer, that's the case, that they, they want to have that. All these pieces go together. They are separate tracks, so this has kind of been piecemealed by the applicant. But according to the applicant, that they all need to, they all need to work for the whole thing to work.
But the other track has been, the one to the very right of this, which I'm assuming is to the west, right?
To the east.
Is it to the east?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, yeah, not where the pond is, but the other one, where Wasson Avenue and Willowbrook Trail is, that's already been...
That's been approved.
It's been approved.
Right.
And so now we're talking about the one across the street.
That's right.
So then, the other one that was denied yesterday is here on the left to the, to the east. So that's gonna come to us eventually.
That's right.
Right?
It'll be on 23rd.
So since Mr. Huey's here and Mr. Wasson, he didn't leave, now there you are. It's hard to recognize people with the mask sometimes, so... So Mr. Wasson's here, Mr. Huey's here, Mr. Gazettet's here, and their engineer's here. Since y'all are all in town today for this one, would y'all spend some time right after this one to make sure that y'all are clear on the other track? We can't do it here in public because it's not on the agenda yet, okay? So, but if you would all get together right after we make a vote on this other one, I would love not to have a big debate at the next meeting. I'd like for y'all to get everything resolved and worked out before you come back. It would be my preference. So if y'all could spend some time doing that today, right after the meeting, I'd appreciate it. But I don't think we can consider that yet because that has just been denied by council. We don't even know if they have done a protest, I mean, are trying to challenge it and bring it to council or not. Or I don't, I don't know where the status is. So, but that's not something that I think is appropriate for us to debate. So let's deal with this other one separately that we've asked him to do and come back with. And then if y'all could meet today, if y'all could resolve that, that'd be awesome. And so the next time, we can just come in and get you approved and move down the road on your development. But let's, if y'all would do that and be understanding with us today, we just can't bring this one up. Or we shouldn't bring it up, I guess. I can do... bring this one up, or we shouldn't bring it up, I guess I can do, I guess I could.
Yeah, I, I think the.
The attorney will stare me down in just a minute if I start talking about something that's not on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to figure out exactly the location. Is this the property that's at Van Highway and the Loop?
No.
No, okay. Now, I understand, okay, thank you.
Now that we're talking about three separate tracks, traffic impact to Garden Valley Road, are these all accessing Garden Valley Road?
The, the ones to the south, you know, south of Garden Valley, yes, they would have access to Garden, only access to Garden Valley Road. I believe, I think the one to the south is about 15 units as well, plus I think 16 with what they're asking to do as well. So, that, that's about 66 homes, yeah.
How many total homes with all three projects?
All three, 111, 111 homes.
All accessing Garden Valley?
The, well, the one we're talking about today would access Garden Valley, Shawnee and Rosemont, so.
Kyle, you said the, I think the, on the back of the, the site plan?
I'll, I'll just say I'd love to see Garden Valley used more.
What?
I'd love to see Garden Valley used more. It's not used that much. Traffic's not very much. I'd love to see it used.
Right, it's, it's, right, so the, on the south side there, that's Garden Valley. There's, there's Ingress, Egress there. To the, to the northeast is, that's Rosemont. They'll have Ingris, yeah, and then off of Shawnee, that, that's actually exit only. Really for emergency use only, so theoretically, you know, for, for public safety, that can be used as, as an access point. The traffic would be distributed through Rosemont or Garden Valley, so depending on which way people are going. So, it's not sole access, there's two points of access.
But the other two are Garden Valley only?
That's right, at, at this time, so there, there is.
And I understand we're not discussing those.
Okay, there is a street stub, so that could continue, so that a street could continue off of Garden Valley to the east towards Parkdale, I believe. So, there is a possibility that there is another point of access for the ones to the south, but.
Now, Kyle, for this particular project, the drainage is all, the drainage plan's all been approved and so on for this particular, this particular development that we're considering today. Because that watershed, it looks like it, it will also impact that watershed also too, if I'm reading the map correctly.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, and again, I believe that's the concern of the Willowbrook Country Club, that, that is one watershed and the applicant's engineer is here and maybe he can, if, how far they've looked into that already, maybe he can address that, but.
I thought he said it drained the other direction.
We get the engineer back up to clarify that, Ms. Mary.
As far as drainage for the Garden Valley North, it drains southwesterly towards the, what's the middle school over there?
Bolter.
Yes, it drains in that direction, yeah, that's, that's a perfect example right there. So, the green property to the north there that we're looking at, it drains in southwestern directions towards that school, yeah, as your cursor's going down, it goes that direction. Willowbrook, actually, there's a little creek that goes through it. It drains north and westerly, so it does not actually ever touch Willowbrook Country Club property. I mean, they, all water eventually, you know, connects, but it's much further downstream and not a direct impact, does not, not impact the, the Country Club property.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I won't go, I was going to call on the city attorney to describe the zoning process and how it applies to engineering work and drainage, but we might say that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's been a contention for quite some.
Yes, it has, but we, we have this thing called case law and state law that we just have to follow. Okay, so, is there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then, since y'all are all here, y'all can, we've got about two more hours of our meeting. You're more than welcome to stay and enjoy the time with us, or you could all go outside and really work on next month's item. I would appreciate that very much, okay? Thank you all. Kyle, you can go with them too, if you, if, let's go ahead and see if we can't get it So, now we're on to P1 or Mr. Roberts and the soon-to-be-retired Dr. Levine. Or is it official? No, not official yet, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be.
Not official yet, not official yet, not official yet.
PowerPoint.
No, um, second clip is the advanced slide for this.
Just tell you? Okay, I'll do that. All right, y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
So, good morning. I'm pleased to be here today, giving you an update of what's going on with COVID-19. We're now, gosh, six months into this ordeal, so, again, I'm George Roberts with the Northeast Texas Public Health District. And first thing I want to share, if you'll next slide, show our, there we are. This is our dashboard from yesterday, so Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. As you'll see up there, we have, at this moment in time, we have 2,612 Smith County confirmed cases of COVID-19. Of those, you can see there 2,028 of those reside in the city limits of Tyler. Our recovered patient count is now at 761 and we've had 26 Smith County residents who have passed away from COVID-19. Excuse me, excuse me. They are now 145 East Texas patients in Tyler, Texas hospitals. So, we begin this journey in this room Friday, March 13th, and when we announced the first three positive cases of COVID-19 in Smith County. So, today, where are we? Well, the virus is still with us and we must continue to take these measures in the coming days, which are, number one, stay home when you're sick. Number two, keep that social distance. Number three, wear a mask in public mainly to protect others from you. Number four, wash your hands often for 20 seconds. Number five, cover your cough and sneezes. Clean and disinfect your surfaces and keep your hands off your face, your eyes and your mouth. We don't talk about that as much, but the number one thing I always tell people is stay home when you're sick. These measures are crucial to protect older adults and persons with underlying medical conditions who are at risk for a more difficult struggle with COVID-19 than our healthier population. And we know that because we talk to our hospitals very, very frequently and they will tell us that the, typically the person who is in their hospital right now dealing with COVID-19. So, now, I want to share several charts with you. So, you see that chart up there? Go back just a second and you can't see it on the chart, but there's a, a line on there that shows positive antigen cases. And what that means is there's a, it gets real, there's, there's three different kinds of tests. There's a PCR test, which is, those are the ones we count, that 2,612. There's an antigen test, which is a test that started back in May and the state has asked us to now start putting those on our dashboard as probable cases. So, the number yesterday was 315. There's also antibody tests that you've all heard about. We don't count those, but those are being done in the community to see people, if people maybe have contracted COVID-19 at some point in time and maybe have built up antibodies to that. So, the next slide there, Cassandra, is, we're going to show you a series of slides here. So, this is the Net Health COVID-19 daily new cases in our seven county jurisdiction. And again, a reminder, Net Health covers, we have, do public health emergency preparedness and disease surveillance in seven East Texas counties. We do it in Smith, do it in Gregg, do it in Anderson, Henderson, Van Zant, Wood and Raines. So, this is our seven county area. So, you see there, early on, it was, you know, the numbers were kind of low and then we had a spike. We had one day that we reported 250 cases and that was as a result of, most of those, roughly 200, was a result of the drive-up testing. One of them was at the St. Paul's, I'm sorry, St. Peter's Catholic Church, but we had a lot of cases that one particular day. And so, you see that rate and the numbers have kind of gone, they've started to go down. We only had 17 reported cases in Smith County yesterday, so we're seeing a downward trend in the number of reported cases. Next slide. This is an interesting slide here and again, it's our seven county area, but if you can pick out there, Smith County, I wish I had a little guide there, you know where, you know where your area is, but the, what this shows is the number of Net Health COVID-19 case rate, positive cases per 10,000 population. So, it's not, so the darker the area, the more cases per 10,000. We want to show this to show maybe the concentration of this. So, the highest concentration we see here in our county are the 75, 702 zip code, 75, 706, 75, 708 and 75, 709 zip codes. Next slide. This is what you call the crude attack rates by county. So, what this is, is basically what is, what is the number of residents per 10,000 population who have been tested positive for COVID-19? So, you see on there, we, this is our seven county area again. You see with Smith County was right at 109.9, Gregg County, our peers in Gregg County at 124.89 and other counties around us are slightly lower. But just in comparison here, what I didn't put on the slide is I've said, well, what does it look like in some of our other Texas counties? Denton County's rate is 87.29, which is less than us. Harris County, Houston area, 183.67. McLennan County, which is Waco, 196.04 and Dallas County is 209.62. So, we've kept it down, you know, Denton County's lower than us, but we, you know, we've stayed pretty, we've kept a tap on this thing pretty well so far, but that's, we're going to knock on wood with that. Next one is, this is the race and ethnicity in our seven county area. And what's interesting about this slide is, is that we don't always know the race or ethnic mix of the person who is getting a test. We get that, we get this from our, the people, whoever the lab vendor is tells us this or whoever the, the provider is tells us this information and we don't always get this. So, this is the, but this is for what we know, we know that roughly 48.7% of the patients have been tested are white, 22.6% are African-American, 27, almost 28% are Hispanic and roughly 1% are Asian Pacific Islanders. Next slide, please. This is one I hadn't seen. This is a new slide here, just as, I thought this was interesting. Race of COVID-19 positive cases when our jurisdiction that have tested at any drive-through walk-up. So, this is information that we know, it looks like it's a predominant Hispanic population there that have tested positive at the drive-ups. Again, the white is less and the, and the black is right below that. Next slide. This is interesting, this is the COVID-19 deaths by race in our seven county area. The seven counties, you see 52 are, of the deaths have been white, one Native American, nine Hispanic and nine black. Next slide. And then we'll show you some slides here on grade, as we start back to school, I think it's interesting to see, okay, what, what about the kids? What are they looking like here? And so, you see there, and again, this is our, our whole jurisdiction. You see what it looks like here is that the pre-K is pretty low, K through 5 is, is pretty low as well, 6 through 8 is less than the K through 5 total, but it's still pretty low. And that number really starts to, to jump up as you go between ninth and 12th grade and then into college. And I'll show you here a slide and then it, basically, the largest group of people that have COVID-19 or tested positive are the 21 to 30-year-olds. Next slide, please. So, we broke this age, that, the 14 to 18 age group is kind of interesting. Who's, what is that combined of? And you kind of see there a, look at that stair step there, is, is the kids get older, they seem to be more susceptible to, to getting this disease. Next slide. And here's kind of a racial, ethnic mix of the, of the, of the slide from a couple of ones ago, the pre-K, the K through 5, 6 through 8 and, 6 through 8, 9 through 12 and then college. And you see, you know, some, the Hispanic is predominant, a couple of them. You see white is predominant in the 6 through 8 as well as the, the college age group, but Hispanic is seeming like they're, they're kind of higher in some other areas there. Next slide, please. This is an interesting slide here too. So, what, what are the ages of the people that are dying from this? And that, we, last time I showed this, we just showed kind of a, a dot kind of going up, but this kind of shows what the, what the dot here is, you can read the dot there. Basically, the, the blue represents one death. So, you see there's one, the 137-year-old, this person was in Gregg County who passed away from this disease, all the way to, we have a 100-year-old person who in Wood County that passed away. But you see up there at the top, the, where it's, you know, four, five and six people getting this, you see up there in the age range, roughly 74, 75, 76, 77, that seems to be, so it looks like the, the higher preponderance of the folks that are passing away from this are in our older population, which is what we've kind of known, but our, our data shows this pretty, pretty clearly right here. Next slide. This is our gender breakdown by county. What's interesting, seemed like when we first started this thing, that were more, more males contracting this disease than females and you see now, the, the females have now, there are more females that with, that have tested positive for COVID-19 than males. Next slide. And here's the age distribution that I was talking about there. So, this is our age distribution. Look at that, again, this is our seven county area here, but look at the, the higher levels in the 21 to 30 crowd. And then we see in our, on our dashboard, you'll see we kind of lump it in 20-year age spots, but we break it down a little bit more to the 10-year spots here that the, again, the, what, 21 to 30-year-olds, they typically are getting out more, they're more active, more social and you see that the, the older people, you know, the 6, over 60 crowd has heard the message of you really need to stay back, be careful when you're going out. So, you see the numbers really start to dip after age 60 there. So, that's the end of my slides here and just to give you a couple of updates here, contact tracing, you've heard a lot about, a lot about contact tracing. Right now, we have 31 people that are helping us do the contact tracing. This includes 12 of our own Net Health staff, plus a number of individuals outside of Net Health. Again, I want to thank the city for their help. Y'all have provided folks in the fire department and the police department to help us do contact tracing. You did this early on. I remember a conversation like the first weekend with the mayor, who basically offered help very quickly to us because he knew that we were, we got hit pretty hard pretty fast. And then, when we had the 200, we, we scaled back on that and then when we had the 250 one day, I reached back out to, to Ed and the mayor, as well as the county judge and said, "Hey, I could use those, that help again." And they very graciously agreed to do that. So, we're very grateful for that. And again, contact tracing is an essential piece of this whole, whole deal. So, the quicker we can get a lab result, the quicker we can start contact tracing, the quicker that we can get people to isolate, stay in their homes, we can find out who their contacts are and then we can start trying to get people to stay at home. Because again, what I say the first thing was, stay home when you're sick, but if you think you've been, if you think you've been exposed to this disease, you need to stay home. And that way, you can potentially, if you are fine, that's great, maybe you get tested or something like that, but if you're fine later, you have no symptoms, you can get back out and do your, your team. But we ask people to stay home when you're, when you're, if you've been exposed, close exposure, or if you're sick. So, that's a very, contact tracing is a very, very vital piece of that and we've had to ramp that up. We've hired recently, we had a real gap in our folks who can speak Spanish, so we were able, we just hired three people to, to help us with the Spanish-speaking contact tracing piece. We just had a conversation in our outline counties, we talked to the Palestine City Council on Monday night and they've agreed to help us to add a contact tracer down in Palestine as well. So, we're reaching back out to some of our other municipalities to see if they can help us as well with this process. Testing, you know, local providers have access to testing, but they require that you have symptoms. So, you know, the symptoms, and again, the, the symptoms of this start off, if you remember, I could state it off very quickly, fever, cough, shortness of breath. Well, that's now expanded to difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle body aches, headache, newly acquired loss of taste or smell, which is really big, that when you hear somebody's loss of taste or smell, that's kind of a, a sign right there. Loss of appetite, sore throat, nasal congestion, runny nose, diarrhea, vomiting, nausea. So, it's, lots of symptoms of this thing have, have been found. The Texas Department of Emergency Management has been a great partner in our area and they've conducted a number of free testing sites here in Smith County over the last really few months. I'm not aware of one that's been scheduled this week or next week, but we will be meeting at EOC tomorrow and we'll find out probably more about that. So, but that's been a very, very helpful thing there. Hospital update, we stay in constant communication with our hospitals. I get a daily dashboard from them that, that tells us where are they? And we also, in our emergency, in our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center Executive Committee, we get the hospitals on the line with us. We want to hear from the hospital administrators as well as the chief medical officers. We want them to tell us, hear their voice, tell us, "How you doing?" And so far, they have said, while they have surged, they basically right now have said that they are handling the surge and they appreciate our support. We were able to reach out through, put in a star request and through the Texas Department of Emergency Management and the RAC, they were able to get some staffing to come in here and help them. Because I know the, the mayor and, and everybody was very active early on trying to find alternative care sites and the. And the hospitals have said at this point, we can take care of the, the physical space. What we need is the people to take care of things. The posi, the hospitals have also told us last week, they're, they're reporting for a bit there, for a couple of weeks, their positivity rate on their tests was around thirty, over thirty percent. They told us last week that that number had started to decline, that percentage had started to decline. Uh, our positivity rate, going back from the start of this thing, is around twelve percent for, for Smith County. Uh, the turnaround time for labs, uh, hospital outpatient is twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and forty-eight to seventy-two hours for their outpatient. So again, that can, that can flex either way. School update, uh, everybody's aware school's starting next week. And, you know, everybody's a little, we're all anxious about that. And so what's going on with that? We've, we've spent time, I've personally spent, spent time with the, uh, the, talking to the schools, the ISDs here in Smith County. They, they tell us that roughly, uh, right now, two-thirds of the students are coming back for in-class room, and one-third are going to do remote, starting out. Uh, and again, that kind of varies by ISD, but that's kind of the number, that seems to be the number that I'm, I'm hearing out there right now. Again, I applaud our community, parents, teachers, school staff, and students, frogging the preparations that have been made to get our kids back to learning. So it's going to be an interesting few weeks. So pray for our, pray for our, our community, pray for our students, our teachers, our, anybody who works in the school system, uh, over the next few weeks. Thanks to the city of Tyler for all your support during these last six months. Mayor Hines, Mr. Broussard, Chief Kobel, Chief Toler, Hal Walker, Jenny Wells, Julie Goodgame. These individuals have all spent countless hours in Emergency Operations Center meetings, along with added phone calls, emails, and texts. There have been numerous other city employees that have given their time and energy to this effort as well. It's been a joint EOC with Smith County, and I think the first joint EOC that I'm, at least in, in my tenure here, I think in many, many years. And it's worked, I think, very, very well. There's been a very collegial atmosphere there and there. Have we always gotten along? No, but we, basically, we try to basically, uh, work things out in that room, we come out with a united front. So I think it's been very, very positive, and that's, let me just tell you, talking to my peers around the country, I just spent a year as the president of the National Association of County City Health Officials, their experience has not been like this. So this is, we've had some, we've had something very special going on right near, as we tried to deal with this situation, because everybody has, uh, has dealt with this situation and tried, what is, what is in the best interest of our community. Uh, special shout-out to my staff at Net Health, who've worked tirelessly during this time, not only with COVID-19, but they've also been there for our WIC clients, environmental health, our laboratory, tuberculosis control, immunizations, vital stats, and our Center for Healthy Living. And thanks also go to Smith County, uh, and so many other partners for their hard work and diligence during this time of service. And finally, I'd be remiss here if I didn't, uh, recognize our Smith County Health Authority. He's with us today to answer questions. I'm sure you have questions, and he's always the, I get to come up here and give the presentation, he answers the hard questions. So Jeff is here today, but he's about to retire, as the mayor mentioned. And I can't tell you what an unbelievable job he has done, uh, these last six months. And I've known Jeff for many, many years, but that we've, we've, uh, we, we've kind of bonded over the last six months. I've leaned on him not only for his medical expertise, but also for his wisdom as we deal with a generational pandemic. So please join me in saying a big thank you to Dr. Jeff Levine for his efforts. With that, I'm happy answering any questions you might have, or call Dr. Levine up here to ask.
We gotta have Dr. Levine up here.
Okay, Dr. Levine.
Can I ask one question before you leave?
Sure.
Regarding the tracking, we're starting to hear some things on the news about false positive testing. Do you track that in any way?
False positive, I don't necessarily track, uh, councilwoman, but we, we do, uh, I think that goes back to the whole thing about, uh, the antigen testing.
Yeah.
And what we talk, again, the, the three different types of testing, it gets kind of wonky telling, describing all that. But the antigen was a test that was, that was started back, uh, back in May. Uh, and, you know, that's, that was, we're, we, we think right now, that test is, uh, it's a pretty good test for positive. We're not as sure about the negatives on those, but the positive, we feel pretty good about. I think what you're talking about was some, there were some nursing homes that were around the state, that there was a lab that gave out some false positive information. I think those have, those have been resolved, but I think we, we still try to pay attention. If something like that does come up, when you say tracking, I don't necessarily track individual false, but I hear situations like that. And I have a, my, my peers around the state, we have a text stream that we, and so we, we keep each other alert on that as well.
Well, you hear about things where people didn't really even go in for the test and heard they were positive.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, well, we heard that, we did a, uh, we did a, we kept trying to, we actually did a rumor control in the, our Joint Information Center, our JIC as we call it. We had them reach out to people. We heard a lot of that, particularly around that St. Peters Catholic Church. And we, we tried to find out, tell us who, who you are, so we can, we want to hear this information directly. And we could not ever, so we heard rumors, but we never heard any facts on that. So we, the, the way the system was set up, it was, it's not set up for you to be able to do that anyway, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Levine, I think your, uh, your presence is required.
So I, I just want to take this opportunity, I'm not going to use up your valuable time, uh, extending my thanks to everyone that George has mentioned. I wish that I could instantaneously give you a solution to this virus. I think one of the things, for, two, two observations. One thing we've discovered is that there's so much that we haven't known, and we are all learning about it together. The second thing, um, I think we've discovered is that transmission of the virus, uh, really hinges on us, our behaviors, how we, um, how we behave around each other. And I don't mean behavior in, you know, the comportment sense. I, I mean behavior in terms of how we, uh, work and operate around each other. Do we create barriers? How much do we engage? How much do we congregate? All of those sorts of things. And my observation from that is that, um, as time has gone on, um, I think, uh, we can begin to really trust and respect what informed citizens in this community, uh, have learned as we provide this data and transparent information. I, I think, uh, good, solid data that they can trust and rely upon is helping them to engage in behaviors that will help, uh, for the long term, reduce the spread of this virus. Uh, and I think we only need to look around us to see how people are embracing and adopting these behaviors. Not, not, um, not with open arms. It's hard, it's hard for all of us to do the kinds of behaviors that we've talked about today are necessary in order to, to battle or combat this pandemic. So the, the one thing I want to leave you with today is, uh, for you as elected officials and for our citizens to pat themselves on the back that they are doing a good job and they are moving in the right direction for us to be successful with this. Cautionary note, the, the virus is very, uh, devious. Not intentionally, but it just reacts that way. So when there are sudden things that happen, uh, it looks for an opportunity to spread. Um, and so, you know, George mentioned next week, there are a lot of concerns about schools opening. When there are major events that happen, major transitions that occur that can affect the way we behave around each other, then that's where we need to look and be careful and be vigilant with where the virus is going to rear its head. So I, I want to commend you on all that you have done in order to, to really, um, protect uh, and promote health in the citizens of this community. And so that's what I want to leave you with today.
Well, and, and I just want to say, um, I thank you to you. When, when this, we first started all our meetings, uh, I was definitely not the calm person in the room. Would be an understatement, uh, but you were always so calm and reassuring with what you thought was the right path. And so I appreciate that very much, and I did listen to you every time. I was yelling a lot, but I actually listened to you. Uh, your, your calmness, your, your, uh, the caring ability that you have, and, and just the honesty. It was very helpful to me to learn quickly, uh, and try to adapt and, and try to, uh, help the, the community. So you just did a great job.
Well, thank you very much.
And I appreciate it. And so the few things that I said to you, um, early on, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if I should apologize or not, but, no, I, um, but you, you did a great job, and I appreciate it. And I, and, and I'll second what you said, and it really has, uh, come around to this, and I thought it always would. It's everybody's personal responsibility for, for us to provide the data. And at this point, we're providing good data, uh, straightforward data. And then you are providing ways to modify some behaviors, uh, to have people stay safe. But it is really everybody's personal responsibility, uh, to make decisions. And, you know, with, with the little decline that we're seeing, you know, that, as you've always said, uh, when modifications happen in personal activity, it, it's about a two-week delay when we start seeing the, the data change. So I'm hoping that the hospitals, we start seeing that decline from this, this being the peak. Uh, and hopefully, we'll start seeing the numbers decline. But it is everybody's personal choice to do.
Absolutely. An informed citizenry will do the right thing.
And they always do. And so we are getting the, the proper data out, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and George, y'all have, have, have been great. And I really do think that the, the state and the federal government have really stepped up and done the very best they can in providing us the resources. I was very upset in the very beginning, because I didn't think we were getting proper resources, but, uh, nobody was. And so, uh, but I think that because of all y'all's work, uh, it, it's made a difference in.
We'll have to continue to work hard, Mayor Hines. We'll have to continue to work hard on that.
Let me tell you, it was especially, uh, Dr. Levine, you and, uh, putting that lab together early was just an incredible feat on your part, because we had no other help. So you were really pivotal in getting good data for us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
Mayor, I had one of, uh, Dr. Levine.
Okay.
First, I, I want to say thank you, Dr. Levine, for your great work in our, uh, Smith County. But being a medical person and having spent a lot of time in medical research and so forth, and this may be a real quick question, but the, uh, the drug that is always talked about for the usage of COVID, I know that, uh, clinical trials are important and that you have to spend time to decide how much of this drug to give to an adult or a child, the hydrochloroquine. Can you just give us a little bit on what your thoughts are in regards to that drug?
Um, I, I thought you were actually leading up to remdesivir.
Remdesivir, I'm sorry, yes.
So, um, hydroxychloroquine, um, you know, is, uh, a drug that has been around for some time.
Right.
Uh, um, it has not historically been used for the purpose of, uh, treating viruses. It's certainly been used as an antimalarial. It's been used for certain connective tissue diseases like lupus. Um, um, that doesn't mean, of course, um, you know, that, um, if there might be a mechanism of action that we shouldn't consider, uh, using different kinds of drugs to, uh, try to do everything we can in order to, uh, save someone's life. Let's, let's just be very point-blank about that.
Right.
Um, that being said, um, you know, uh, we have to have some prioritization. We, you know, there are thousands of drugs and chemicals out there, and anyone could come forward and say, well, let's just try this, or let's just try that. Trying something in an experimental sort of way, uh, is inconsistent with a scientific approach. Um, and so what, what we've discovered with hydroxychloroquine, with the available control trials that have, uh, been conducted since we began to use it, uh, in this circumstance, um, is that there does not seem to be any benefit, I'm sorry, does not seem to be any benefit or efficacy of the drug for treating the virus. And moreover, that the potential side effect profile in this group of patients could be complicated by certain cardiovascular outcomes that might even be problematic or more severe. So when you have a drug like that, right, that you don't know is effective, or you haven't shown it to be effective, and in fact, it can cause more problems than you started with, you don't, uh, promote that drug, uh, in the medical science world. That's just how we operate. I hope that answers your question.
It certainly does. Thank you, sir.
And thank you very much. And I would like to say that, uh, uh, while those discussions maybe go on at the EOC some, because that has become such a political discussion, uh, we've tried to stay out of that completely, because we're, we don't want to be in the politics of it all. Uh, we just want to be focused on, uh, getting the data to the public. So I appreciate the question, but I, I just wanted to add that we, as an EOC, are trying to stay out of the political side of the equation. So then, um, we are, if there's not any more questions, Dr., uh, George, you and Dr. Levine, I know are busy. So if y'all want to go ahead and go, you're welcome to. Or you can stay for the budget presentation that will last about an hour. Thank y'all very much, Dr. Levine and George. Do we have a? Oh, yeah, yes, I do. Oh, okay, Bob Brewer. Yes, we actually do. Good morning. State your name and address for the record, please.
Bob Brewer, eighteen-hundred De Charles, Tyler, seven-five, seven-oh-one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got kind of a smorgasbord of what I'd like to present. First of all, talking about the COVID, this appeal, uh, letter, unalienable rights, masks, and excess deaths. First of all, I don't know how many of y'all have read the Bishop's Appeal to Men and Women of the World. Oh, Jennifer told me I have five minutes, so maybe I only have three.
Will you just go ahead and take your five minutes?
Okay, so anyway, uh, there's a lot of, we're not getting the, the truth. And this appeal that was signed in May, uh, sort of states what we're facing. The facts have shown, under the pretext of COVID-19 epidemic, the unalienable rights of citizens have in many cases been violated, and their fundamental freedoms, including the exercise of freedom of worship, expression, and movement, have been disproportionately and unjustifiably restricted. So since I don't have the time, I thought I did.
No, no, you, you've got five minutes. You just go.
So, "Public health must not and cannot become an alibi for infringing on the rights of millions of people, let alone for depriving civil authority," that's you, "to do their duty to act wisely for the common good." This is particularly true as growing doubts emerge from several quarters about the actual contagiousness, danger, resistance of the virus. Many authoritative voices in the world of science and medicine confirm that the media's alarmism about COVID-19 appears absolutely unjustified. This was written early in May, and it's really come true all the way down to now. The letter that came in June was to President Trump. But in recent months, it's been, uh, we, we have been witnessing the formation of two opposing sides that I would call biblical, the children of light and the children of darkness. The children of light constitute the most conspicuous part of humanity, while the children of darkness represent an absolute minority. And yet, the former are the object of a sort of discrimination that places them in a situation of moral inferiority with respect to their adversaries, who often hold strategic positions in government, politics, the economy, and in the media. In an apparently inexplicable way, the good are held hostage by the wicked and by those who help them either out of self-interest or fearfulness. Okay, once again, that was written the first of June, and it's still holding true. Uh, the main thing that I'd, I'd like to get across to you guys is Bob Hall, Senator Hall, has been having these live Facebook town hall meetings with the America's Frontline Doctors that appeared on the steps of the Supreme Court. Simone Gold, who was the leader of that, lost her job within four hours of that. Simone Gold, who was the leader of that, lost her job within four hours of that. The most popular video ever on Facebook got shut down in five hours. And they will be on live at twelve o'clock. I wish we could all sit here and watch it on your screens when Harvey Reich, the head epidemiologist at Yale University, is going to tell you all about this. This is a pretext. And if you look up the definition, it says, uh, "pretense, false appearance, ostensible reason or motive assigned or assumed as a color or cover for the real reason of motive or motive for something." That's what we're dealing with. Let's see, what am I doing now? Uh, unalienable rights. The thing that we do not know, I doubt if anybody in this room, is the reason the Constitution was written was to protect our unalienable rights. And I bet nobody here knows, except maybe Shirley, that on the first page of the first book that you'll find in the library over there in the basement of the courthouse is why the Constitution was written. And that is the second sentence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." So basically, there's two types of laws. There's God's law, which is covered by that, and then there's everything else, which is what y'all do with whatever you do. So, the way, the reason the Constitution was written, it's an administrative law to make sure that God's laws are not infringed with. And that's what this is doing with everybody across the globe. So, where am I now? Okay, masks. There are OSHA regulations. The normal atmospheric content of idra- of oxygen is twenty point nine. If a level drops down below fifteen point five, that is known as a OSHA considers it an oxygen-deficient hazardous atmosphere that can threaten the life or health. OSHA mandates that employers must implement procedures to warn employees or visitors uh of the oxygen-deficient hazard and provide necessary personal protection equipment. I just got this yesterday. It's an oxygen analyzer, and I've hooked it up to a mask, and I've done so many different ways of doing it. And there is no way that I can avoid not presenting myself with an oxygen-deficient OSHA hazardous atmosphere. So this whole thing about wearing masks is just part of the pretext that Bishop Vigano, who was appointed by Pope Benedict XVI to be the supreme sort of ambassador to the United States. Okay, the thing that Bob will be talking about, and Harvey Reich, if he's on, is has to do with hydroxychloroquine. Okay, this is a graph. The red is countries that do not use hydroxychloroquine, either as a prophylactic or an early-use drug when symptoms are first uh apparent. The blue are the ones that take it for like malaria, or as a prophylactic, or have taken it early. There are excess deaths in the United States right now by the experts that show. This is was current as of August the fourth. Texas had seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one deaths. Six thousand five hundred and thirty-three could have been avoided if hydroxychloroquine was used as a prophylactic. The United States, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty thousand excess deaths because we're waiting on some vaccine that will prove maybe fifty percent effective and cost orders of magnitude more money than hydroxychloroquine. So anyway, uh, I'm sorry to get so excited. My Romans lesson this morning said, "Sacrifice myself for truth," and there you have it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer. Uh, I I don't um have any questions. If y'all have any questions, I I I do have a statement that um the the nice thing about um what you just did is you, I mean, you have the ability, you have the ability to speak out, and you've just had the time to do so. Uh, and that is why the Dr. Levine and I had the little discussion that we did, that it's everybody's personal responsibility and uh personal choice uh to do and believe like they would like. And and you and I have talked on the telephone about this, and we know that that is your personal opinion, uh and you have the right to that. Uh, and so you can express it any way that you'd like, and you just did. Uh, and everyone else is making the personal responsibility. And we have done everything that we can within the um uh what we have looked at is to just make sure that we're providing data from the hospitals and others, other data that we have to the public, so everyone can make their own personal decision. Yours are different than mine, uh but you get to make that a personal decision uh as well as I do i- as well. Uh, so I appreciate your comments, and did anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to P two. And Bob, sorry, I didn't see your card earlier. I'm glad that uh it was brought to my attention. Yes, sir. Mr. City Manager?
So George and Dr. Levine, they want to stick for my budget presentation? It's uh really. Give a moment to set this back. And Mayor, I did send, this will probably be about twenty minutes more. Did y'all want to take a break before, or y'all want to do one after?
It's a great idea.
Okay.
So we're in recess for five minutes?
We can move, move them closer to the mayor, you think?
They're beautiful.
They could vote next to the mayor, maybe? After this, will you please?
I think it's only this one that can see and speak.
If we're running to IT, uh, help, I'll I'll call when you're done.
You know, you have the right to view.
Oh, God.
One miss.
Well, you know, we're gonna do another.
We got this. Or two weeks. Right, right? Coming back from recess and now we will have a presentation from the city manager on P2 related to the 2020-2021 annual budget presentation.
Mayor Heinz and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be before you this morning for one of our most important roles in governing and administering the municipal government. The presentation and discussion of the plans and services for the coming fiscal year in the form of our proposed $202 million budget for operations and capital improvements. In my two decades of leading municipal governments, this has been one of the most difficult years that I've seen for budget administration and development. We praised the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget at this time last year as one of the most effective budget documents we've built with our plans for this current fiscal year, which implemented new technology, moved up maintenance of buildings and replacement of vehicles, and ensured that our public servants had the equipment they needed to improve our citizens' quality of life. Yet, as with all budgets that are adopted, they are just a plan for the future. It states our intentions for the next 12 months, built on forecasts of what we can expect using our insight of our past experiences. Since mid-March, I'm constantly reminded of the following quote by Dwight D. Eisenhower, who led our united victory in World War II and our nation as president through much of the 1950s. In preparing for battle, I've always found that plans are useless, but planning is indispensable. We, as an organization, must be flexible at all times as we deal with crises regularly. We know that plans must be abandoned or changed on the fly if needed, yet we stress the importance of planning and analysis at all levels, from the departments to the full city, in order to improve our services to our citizens. Our commitment to performance excellence at all times doesn't depend on the condition of the economy or culture-shifting illnesses, but on the dedication of the nearly 870 public servants who are called to serve always for our citizens. With the double blow to our local economy beginning the week of March 9th with the onset of COVID-19 pandemic and substantially reduced oil prices, we went into battle with our strategies of reducing spending and being flexible with anticipated projects. Our time and energy became focused on the public safety of our community with work towards ensuring the safety of our citizens, workforce, and assets for this year. We adapted our budget and services very quickly to conserve our funds and use resources in attaining protective gear for our staff on the front lines. In March and April, we studied what we expected to lose in sales tax revenue for this year. Our sales tax revenue traditionally makes up about 40% to 42% of the general fund revenue, and we monitor its progress or retractions as significant changes correspond to immediate actions on our decisions for upcoming expenses. This year's budget was built to match last year's sales tax revenues, and we actually saw a 1.23% increase over the previous year from October of 2019 to February of 2020. Then, with March 2020, we began a 7.64% decline in retail and commercial activity for that month compared to the year before. Our worst month was with the June 2020 receipts, which was a 20.5% decline over the previous year and reflected the retail and commercial activity from April 2020. We had a major bounce back at 18.51% increase from the previous year in July 2020 receipts, as there were several audit corrections reported and an actual increase of 1.4% over the previous year for the retail and commercial activity in May 2020. Our expectations for this fiscal year are that we will see our sales tax revenues remain flat as compared to the previous year, which is primarily due to the audit corrections that came in last month and reversed the course of the plunge for this revenue stream. We expect to see the rest of the fiscal year and next year to remain flat for sales tax growth, and will continue to monitor for needed adjustments. We expect a loss of hotel occupancy tax revenue for this fiscal year equating to over $1.2 million. With a loss from conventions, sports, education, and other professional and personal travel expected for the rest of this fiscal year and into the next fiscal year, we are uncertain of what the actual recovery looks like for our hotel industry. To put the state of hotels in Tyler in perspective, we saw a decline, revenue decline, from February to June by 31.59%. This is another fund that we will evaluate as the year progresses and we move into 2021 for any return to normal or if instead we have a continued decline. To safeguard our citizens and visitors, the city and our team's sports partners closed or reduced activities related to our parks and recreational programs for this year. The effective loss from revenue, from the fees that we charge for these services, is an estimated $301,000. We know there was no relief coming for our revenue losses on sales tax, hotel occupancy tax, or other streams related to fees and fines. We're working with the state of Texas and FEMA for reimbursements for our public safety costs directly related to COVID-19, but these reimbursements aren't always a guarantee. We are able to obtain CARE Act funding to support our transit and airport systems, which does provide relief for our general fund, yet those are only two of the 38 budget funds that we are seeing unforeseen or difficult contractions. Despite the change in our perspective for the past few months, this organization has continued to make progress in the work plans set out for this year and planning into the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. This proposed budget reflects a sense of preserving and maintaining current city services during the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic, with our staff using their skills and talents to improve the lives of our neighbors and fellow citizens. We continue to grow our police department to address and handle community needs. This includes two police officers authorized by the council for this year and the two new officers for next year that was approved through the U.S. Department of Justice COPS grant. The COPS grant will pay approximately 50% of the two new officers' salaries and equipment for the next three years, at which time the city will assume all costs related to the positions. This will provide an authorized strength to the police department of 200 officers. The growth of training capabilities and facilities of the police department is also a primary goal for this year. As we move to become a larger training provider, it is important to meet the needs of our officers and the needs of the police academy students from our region. During the year, the department made significant improvements to the gun range. This includes $60,000 to, includes $60,000 to make repairs and install a moving target system. In addition, the department entered into a memorandum of understanding with the state of Texas to provide skimmer and fraud training. Our officers and investigators have become the leading voices in this area of credit card fraud, helping to save millions of dollars for customers, businesses, and banks from this criminal activity. The use of social media and public information capabilities is a priority to the department as well. Through a partnership with the communications department, our police department has been able to greatly expand our utilization of information resources. The use of video through the hashtag Get Up Challenge, the Friendly Neighborhood Thief, and Find Them Fridays have increased and enhanced our community outreach. "Our Family Serving Your Family." This is the new motto and continued belief from our fire department to the community they serve. Their service goes beyond accidents and blazing fires, as they provide outreach and training for our youth and businesses. As the statement goes, "The more we sweat in peace, the less we bleed in war," our hope is that the more training inspections and outreach our firefighters provide, we will see a corresponding decline in fires and other life-threatening situations that our firefighters have to rush into. Cancer is one of the primary killers of firefighters throughout the United States, as they are exposed to numerous chemicals and carcinogens while fighting fires and hazardous material accidents. We have instituted numerous processes and equipment to aid in keeping our firefighters safe, and we continued with this push in the two new fire stations we opened this year. Both have the ability to keep and clean the bunker gear separate from the living areas, with even the exhaust from where the gear is stored being brought away from the firefighter's work areas. We are a step closer to creating our own fire academy, with the approval of changes recently for hiring made by the Civil Service Commission in the construction of Fire Station Number Four. This will allow for broader recruitment by not requiring firefighter certification to apply for our department and our staff providing the training for the new recruits into our department. The train, recruits and trainers will use Fire Station Number Four as their base as they train and provide services for this section of the city. Our commitment to our citizens' quality of life continued through the upgrades and improvements through our parks and trail systems. With the amount of people working from home and children out of school, this commitment to parks and trails became a lifeline for people to get outside their homes and enjoy the beauty of Tyler. Our parks, including the all, new all-inclusive playground at Southside Park and the new playground at Gasaway Park, became the go-to destination spots for families and pets to socially distance while getting fresh air. We completed several major projects this year, and unfortunately, we haven't been able, that we haven't been able to celebrate yet. The 1936-era Fun Forest Pool has been completely rebuilt to provide families and children with aquatic fun during the hot summer days. We took the traditional lap pool and transformed it into a facility with water slides, splashpads, and zero-entry water features. The new Wilder Park Splash Pad is now open, along with the covered basketball court and glass recreation center improvements. A major achievement that I want to emphasize is our selection as the 2020 Governor's Community Achievement Award from Keep Texas Beautiful. This is recognition by the state of Texas for our leadership in conservation, beautification, landscaping, and recycling. This award comes with a grant of $290,000 from the Texas Department of Transportation for a landscape project of our choosing along the highways inside our city limits. The council's commitment to drainage improvements continued into this year and next. We completed drainage improvements on the downtown section of Broadway, Courtney Miller, and Fleschold this year, and have 11 drainage projects on hand for the remainder of this year and into 2021. The use of half-cent funds and stormwater drainage fund is making an impact in reducing flooding and water damage throughout our city. The half-cent fund is also our source to move forward the intelligent traffic system that is linking together our traffic signals and other traffic devices to improve flow for our drivers. Our trial project along South Broadway and Beckham have proven successful, and we're planning to spend $1 million a year for the next 10 years to build a traffic system that will work together and reduce congestion in our city. Our commitment to our largest traffic, our largest infrastructure investment, our streets, continues with two cents of the property tax rate set aside towards our Quality Street Commitment Fund. It is expected that we will generate $1.63 million towards asphalt seal coating and crack sealing in the coming year. This will provide for approximately 80 lane miles of streets repaired and maintained in our city. This, along with our $3.5 million from the half-cent fund for street overlays, keeps the city on its goal of 81 to reach for our street program's pavement condition index. For fiscal year 2021, sales tax revenue continues to be the main funding stream for our general fund activities. The general fund are the services that do not generate their own revenues as our enterprise funds do, and include such functions as the police, fire, parks, library, municipal court, streets, and traffic control. Our projections for the property taxes, based on the rate I'll discuss in a minute, are approximately 32% of the general fund budget. An interesting note on the property levies is that the amount we bring in, approximately $23.3 million, barely covers the cost of the fire department at $19.6 million. This is why we continue to work on different revenue streams for our general fund services to protect the franchise fees, grants, and other revenue opportunities beyond property tax. We are recommending the no-new-revenue property tax rate for the fiscal year 2021 to the council. Your current avalorum property tax rate is 25.99 cents per $1,000 valuation, and we are proposing through this budget to adopt the no-new-revenue rate at 25.90 cents per $1,000 valuation. This rate reduction will bring our rate in line with the no-new-revenue tax rate as set by the Texas Legislature in 2019, and we will generate the same amount of revenue on existing values from 2020 plus new tax revenue on the, new properties that came online during the current year. This property tax rate is the lowest of cities over 15,000 in population in Texas and reflects the values of the blueprint as set out in 1995. Our property tax rate is significant, as it does not have any debt components associated with it. For every other tax rate that is set in the state of Texas, from counties, cities, and school districts, nearly every one of them will have a portion for debt repayment or interest and sinking rates. The city of Tyler has every dollar collected on property tax levies going straight to our operations for the public. Every penny paid by our citizens is used towards maintenance and operations of city services. Tyler continues its steady and strong growth on property values with a 4.31% increase in values over the past year. For the past five years, we continue to be in the range of 4% to 5% growth in values, which allows for predictability and sustainability as we build our budgets. This year, we are experiencing closer to our regular rate of growth in values and additions, which reflects the confidence that our citizens and newcomers have in Tyler as a location for residential, business, and industrial growth. There's an interesting story that is reflected in the graph that I hope is noticed. We are currently experiencing tension and stress that, with our budget for this year and into the next year's proposed budget, but it is not as stressed as the budgets we went through during the Great Recession. Growth in values went up so quick that when they burst, the decline was sharp and long for the next few years. Our steady growth around 4% allows for bumps and bruises with our crashing of the system and needing large property tax increases. We can take smaller steps to modify where needed and maintain the services needed by our citizens. Our Tyler Water Utilities represents four functions of providing quality water and protecting the environment and public. First is our water treatment process, which includes our water sources at Lake Tyler and Lake Palestine to our Golden Road and Lake Palestine water treatment plants. Next, we have the 742 miles of lane, water distribution lines that connect our residences and businesses. After use, we then have our wastewater collection lines, including our lift stations and manholes to take our sanitary sewer to the final location, which are our two wastewater treatment plants, where it is treated and the resulting effluent is put back safely into our creeks. At this first stage, we've made significant improvements to the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant and the quality of water flowing from the plant into our pipes. The backwash pump station and clear well baffling projects have provided for greater filtration and chlorine residual stability to improve the taste and smell of our water as it makes its way to our user. Our utility crews work to replace older deteriorating water lines with new PVC water lines in different areas of the city where residual counts have been an issue. In that same issue, we maintain our flushing program of dead-end mains throughout our city to prevent stagnation and the loss of chlorine residuals in our water lines. One of our major wastewater treatment projects for this year and into next year involves extending the capacity and life of one of our plants that has been in operation since the 1950s. The Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant is permitted by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to treat 9 million gallons per day. Because two primary clarifiers were taken offline in 2003, the capacity is approximately 30% less, making it able to treat up to 6.75 million gallons per day. The construction project for the plant that has already been approved by the council will restore the capacity to 9 million gallons per day and provide for the continued growth in the southern and eastern parts of our city. With our agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, on the consent decree in 2016 and commitment to improving our water quality for our customers, we have increased our rates on water and wastewater services for the past five years to pay for the costs involved in operations and capital improvements. We still compare very favorably to the rest of the water wastewater service, prices in Texas. Using the Texas Municipal League Annual Utility Cost Survey, we see that our rates are considerably lower on residential water fees and similar or lower on wastewater rates, depending on usage as compared to other cities' utility rates. On the previous slide, we showed the bar graphs relational to the current and proposed rates. We are proposing a $2 base rate increase on both water and wastewater rates to be effective on October 1st. The regulatory compliance fee, which pays towards debt associated with our wastewater collection system improvements as required by the EPA, will stay at the same amount as set by last year, $6.13 per month. With our bond refinancing measures and consideration of using the Texas Water Development Board for future bond financing, we can keep the regulatory compliance fee flat for the coming year. To meet the requirements of the EPA consent decree, the city is expected to spend nearly $250 million on improvements to the wastewater collection system. We have been building up cash through our wastewater rate increases, but we will need to borrow $213 million to pay for line replacements, manhole repairs, and, or, and other capital improvements. Our previous financing solution was going to the bond market, but we have been examining the use of the Texas Water Development Board as a funding solution. This is a state program with interest rates lower than the open market. In fact, they are currently at 0% interest. In our evaluation of future debt needs and expected interest rates through the Texas Water Development Board, we can reduce future interest payments by approximately $74.5 million over the life of the 30-year debt. The requirement for use of the, of the Water Development Board funding is to have and utilize a water conservation policy. Tyler is one of the last cities in Texas that does not comply with the state's water convention, water conservation policy, which requires for users to pay a higher rate for the more water they use. Our current rate structure is designed as a declining block rate structure, meaning the cost of the water used decreases as usage increases. In this structure, there are no, there is no incentive to reduce the amount of water used for future conservation measures, measures, or extend the life of water sources. For our use of the Water Development Board, we propose putting in place an inclining block rate structure. This will have the unit cost of water increase as customers' use increases. The structure revision is expected to generate the same amount of revenue for the water fund, as customers with higher water usage may find measures to reduce water usage as intended by the state's policy. I do note that this revision will not be effective on October 1st, but instead go into place at the time that we need to borrow from the Texas Water Development Board. We expect this may be between March and September of next year. To give a better understanding of the change to an inclining block rate structure, we put together the chart on your screen. There are different rate classes developed to reflect our types of users, from single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, governmental, institutional, industrial, and irrigation meters. The classifications have rates built from our cost to produce water at $3.17 per thousand gallons. For residential customers that use less than 10,000 gallons and continues to use the same amount of water, the monthly increase would be equal to the proposed base rate increase. For residential customers that use between 10,000 and 30,000 gallons, the increase would be between $4.44 to $25.92. For those higher water users, which will be in your governmental, institutional, and industrial rate categories, we will work with them to provide estimates on possible impacts with the changes to give an opportunity to budget for or make changes to their water use. Our wastewater rate structure is based on the same categories with the basis as the cost to treat wastewater at $3.26 per thousand gallons. cost to treat wastewater at three dollars and twenty-six cents per thousand gallons. With the use of the funding through the Texas Water Development Board and the new rate structures, we are able to hold off on future substantial increases to the regulatory compliance fee. I mentioned earlier that we were able to keep the fee associated with debt repayments to six dollars and thirteen cents for the coming year. Our earlier models had this fee increasing to thirty-six dollars per month in future years, based on the amount, based on using the open market for debt. The Texas Water Development Board funding will keep this fee much lower, more in line with the current fee level. As a comparison, for our solid waste rates for residential pickup, we offer a premium service at a considerably low monthly rate that provides, on average, eight collections per month. Our solid waste staff consistently receive high marks during the citizen surveys, always delivering top-rated services and demonstrating their call-to-serv commitment with outstanding customer service. We continue to implement, to incrementally move residential customer rates so that residential services are not subsidized by commercial accounts and better reflect the true cost of service. The coming year's rate change is thirty-three cents, bringing the monthly rate to seventeen dollars and three cents. We do consider our rate in relation to other similar-sized cities and solid waste service costs. Our rate is lower than most of our benchmark cities, of which we are providing twice-a-week service, which most of them are not. We are also proposing an increase in the tipping fee at the landfill from forty-two dollars to forty-seven dollars, which is paid by non-residents when taking items out to the landfill. The City of Tyler's Development Services Department operates as its own enterprise fund, without any public dollars used to provide planning, zoning, inspection, and permit services. Based on our research of our benchmark cities, the City of Tyler is the only city that funds development service functions exclusively through permit and application fees. Retention and recruitment continue to be a challenge in development services, as we have historically seen below-market rates and employ less staff than most cities of our size. The incentive to keep up with the market for positions is that it allows for retention of institutional knowledge that a department community, development community expects when they file a permit or application. We evaluate the fees annually to keep this fund solvent and sustainable without public assistance, yet at the same time competitive with our benchmark cities. We've also been put in a recent position of revising our residential permit fees. The state legislature adopted new laws in 2019 to prohibit cities from charging residential fees based on valuation. Valuation was a method we used, along with many other cities in Texas, to cover staffing costs as the cost of labor and materials increased, which in turn increased the valuation of the property. Due to changes in state law, residential permit fees are now assessed on a price per square foot, which is variable and does not allow revenue to track with changes in cost of business or valuation. We developed a rate structure for permit costs where we converted from valuation to cost per square foot equivalency. The proposed new rate for residential new construction permits is a flat rate of twenty-five cents per square foot of the new building. An important note, as we see the comparison, the City of Tyler does not charge impact fees, which reduces the cost of the permit in comparison to other cities of similar size to us. We are proposing the permit fees for alterations and remodels to have a flat rate of thirty-five cents per square foot under the new, the new value, or the new system and structure. The commercial new construction permit fee is proposed to increase by establishing a new base rate to the existing tiered structure. This will increase the cost, using a one-million-dollar project as the example, from two-thousand-six-hundred-seven dollars for the permit to three-thousand-five-hundred-and-six dollars. Approximately one-third of our budget is dedicated to the salaries and benefits of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-plus employees who serve this city. As part of our city's blueprint for doing business, we want to build a sustainable approach to employee compensation that provides incremental merit-based pay increases. This year, we plan to offer all qualifying employees a merit-based pay increase of two percent, based on their upcoming performance evaluation. We have built an exceptional team of public servants and want to stay competitive in the market for their pay and retention and compensation. We have used market analysis from our peer cities and developed a four-year market adjustment strategy for many of our non-civil service positions. The first phase for the positions being adjusted will take effect on January first, 2021. For the health fund, we made a pledge several years ago to work to try to maintain a balance of a seventy-thirty split between the organization and employees on the city's self-funded health insurance plan. We are proposing a ten percent increase on the employees' premiums for the next calendar year on the different plan options, which will move the percentage share from the current eighty-twenty split to a seventy-six-twenty-four split amongst the organization and employees. As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule per state statutes, the council has two actions that it must take today. It must adopt a proposed rate that becomes a ceiling for consideration and further debate and use for, to use for publication purposes. And the council must set a public hearing for the budget and tax rate. As we are recommending the no-new-revenue tax rate, the state law requires only one public hearing for the tax rate and budget. Staff recommends holding the public hearing at our next scheduled, regularly scheduled city council meeting on August 26th. We expect to bring the tax rate and budget to the council for adoption at your meeting on September 9th. I do want to extend my deep appreciation to my budget team of Kedrick Trimble, Renissa Wade, and Blake Caffey for their countless hours of taking the budget proposals from each department and working to refine these into the document we have for review today. In addition, I note the incredible work in showcasing our budget story, as shown in this presentation developed by Jennifer Pittman and Blake Caffey. I also remind my gratitude to you, the city council. You provided direction and priorities in conversations, deliberations, and ideas throughout the year that set the stage for the budget that we provided. Our focus on employees, infrastructure, parks, and public safety reflects your vision for this community. I thank you for your service and insight on behalf of the citizens of Tyler. It is a privilege to serve you and present this budget for the fiscal year 2021 programs and services for your consideration.
Are there any questions of the city manager?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for the detailed presentation, Mr. City Manager. And so there are some actions, I believe, that we need to take. Is that right?
Yes, sir. There are two specific actions that the council needs to take with this item. The first item, or the first issue item to do is going to be to vote to place proposals to adopt the property tax rate of zero point two-five-nine dollars, and, which is twenty-five point nine-zero cents, and adopt the final fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget as action items for the September 9th, 2020 city council meeting. Actually, I think that's the final.
Is there a specific language we need to make in the motions?
On this one, I don't believe there is. It's just, I mean, to adopt the, or, place proposals to adopt the property tax rate of twenty-five point nine cents. Is that right?
Right.
Oh, there he's my.
There's Kedrick.
There we go.
Kedrick, yeah, but you need to talk on this?
We just need you to mention the tax rate in the motion.
Sure.
Could you say it one more time?
The first one I had is voting to schedule a public hearing. Correct. And then the second one is to...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Is there an order they need to take?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I'll entertain a motion to, to do the August 26th, 2020 public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget.
I move to set the public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget for August 22nd, 2020 city council meeting.
Twenty-sixth.
Second. Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, and the adoption.
The debt.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So we have a motion to do a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget on August 26th, 2020.
That's correct.
And that's Linda's motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A second from Ms. McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then the third, this next thing would be, do we need to state that it's going to be, that we will take a vote on September 9th?
Yes, sir. When stating the actual tax rate of...
Bob, you want to do that?
I do. I move that we adopt a no-new-revenue ad valorem tax rate of twenty-five point nine-zero cents.
If, so...
Uh-huh, yep.
Okay, yes, so just making sure that the language is right, because just, yeah, I don't, so you have to, what you're doing, that's a weird thing, is, you're, so you're publicly stating that you will, the top rate you will consider, so don't adopt a rate yet.
Right, right.
Uh, no, no, that's okay. It's just, um, this is law, it's hard. So what you want to do is, if, do y'all have the cover memo, possibly? The second item, although there's a typo, and I'll get to that in a minute, so, a motion to place proposals to adopt the property tax rate of twenty-five point nine-zero cents, and to adopt the final fiscal year, and that should be 2020, 2021 budget, as, for consideration on the September 9th, 2020 city council meeting. I said, that's, that is the gist of the motion that should be considered.
Okay, hold on.
Back that up.
You hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you back that up?
You were in contemplation, so I wanted to make sure that...
Yeah.
Because I was practicing, also not practicing law.
Okay, I'm, I move that we consider voting to place proposals to adopt an ad valorem tax rate and adopt the final fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget as an action item for September 9th, 2020 city council meeting, with that ad valorem tax rate of twenty-five point nine-zero cents per hundred.
Perfect.
Second.
I have a motion from Westbrook, a second by McKeller. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So that will be legally correct. You want your sheet back?
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good to see you all today.
Morning, Chief.
Come to you today in reference to a request for a resolution. We come on an annual basis in reference to East Texas Auto Theft Task Force. We've been a member since 1991, and it continues to be a very productive task force that we participate here in East Texas. So today, I'm asking that the city council consider adopting a resolution, authorizing the police department to participate with other law enforcement agencies, and the submission of a grant request from the East, or the Texas Automobile Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority for the 29th year, funding the East Texas Auto Theft Task Force, and authorize the city manager to enter into a working agreement.
Questions of Jimmy? This is my eleventh time to hear that motion. I mean, the presentation.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Not at all. It's an action item. We need a motion.
Yeah, I think we need a motion, right? Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve R. 1.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, a motion by Westbrook, a second by Ms. McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
That's his shortest presentation.
Cassandra, are...
Does that more than say?
Cassandra, are we pulling R. 2?
Yes, sir.
We're going to pull R. 2.
And for a little background, do you want to give me background?
Yeah, please come up front.
I didn't even do that to her.
Yes, you did. That's what you just said.
I was just going to give you all any mind you're going to, or pull it.
I think I'm going to have Cassandra make a presentation every meeting before I leave.
The reason why I'm asking that you pull this today is that Smith County still needs to do more polling locations, and I just want to bring that all back to you at one time. And the governor has said that we do not have to do that by August 17th, so I just want to go ahead and put it on the next agenda, if possible.
Yeah, I think that'll be good, because I'm sure Smith County will be, since it's a November election, they'll be stating, there'll be a lot of polling locations compared to what we normally do.
Right. Okay, so the public is aware of early voting. The governor has extended that, it was, he extended a week earlier, so we're, early vote is from October 13th to October 30th.
For my birthday, good. That's a good birthday present, not to be on the ballot in the voting day start. So we'll pull this item in until the next meeting. Thank you, Cassandra. And I believe you have a R. 3? You're doing the presentation on?
Oh, I guess I have it.
Yes.
You do what?
Or who, do you want to, you want to do?
She'll, she'll fix up anything I mess up. That's her primary responsibility, does it all. So, Mayor and Council, the Rose City Mud Board, Municipal Utility District that was created by the legislature in 2019, that the city worked on to see as far as it constructed and was involved in, and has three representatives on the five-member board, two of which are represented by the county, and Judge, County Judge Moran, and County Commissioner War. And as we've continued, and then the other ones that you had previously put in were Mayor Hines and former council members Mark Watley and John Nix. As we have been working with different attorneys on this issue and looking to see and make sure...
I think it was Sam Mize, I think.
No. It was, no.
It wasn't? It was Mark?
It was Mark and John, yes. But, but that's okay. So as we've worked on this with other attorney firms and just trying to make sure that everything is structured as we got, getting closer to the first meeting, one of the things that was determined, as just they kind of looked through this, is the board members from the city need to be existing officers of the city, either elected or appointed officers of the city. And so that meant that the former council members, and Mark Watley and John Nix, were not able to serve, your current mayor, Martin Hines, can continue on. But we need two other representatives then to fill their spaces, so that, from the current council. So that was, is the item before you today, is essentially it's, you are replacing the two members with two members of the council.
Okay, so volunteers, probably...
I think that might have been Bob and I.
Yeah? Okay, we have two volunteers to do it, Bob Westbrook and Councilman Sellers. It's actually in, it does encompass right up to your area, your district, so...
Yes.
So at this time, we, I'll entertain, I'll just make a motion, because I can do that. I'll make a motion that we replace the other two members that are former council members with current council members, Bob Westbrook and Linda Sellers. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm glad you seconded it, since you're a volunteer, so...
Volunteer.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
State your name and...
All right.
You go, no, go ahead, yeah.
Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the City of Tyler.
Got you.
Here to give you a presentation on our ITS, Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan. To start out with, Mayor, Council, got a couple scenarios for you to, to imagine. Is one, you drive through town most days, most times, and you go through more than one traffic signal at a time. Not a green light every time, but better progression than we have today. Second option scenario to imagine is, there are going to be issues that arise, that come up, but imagine staff getting automatic alerts, being able to remotely access those intersections to come up with an action plan on how to solve that prior to even getting this call from a citizen. So that is some basic-level components of a successful transportation system. So the question is, how do we get there? So the next slide, we have a simple image that I think we all can understand as a barstool. You know, you need all three legs in order for it to work, and they need to be supported equally, because if they're not supported equally, it's going to be out of balance. So the three components that we have that are part of our system are staffing, funding, and the master plan, and I want to speak to those individually. Next slide. So with staffing, we have quantity, experience, and compensation. We can have all the funding that we want and a great plan, but if we don't have the right staff to maintain that and implement it, we're going to struggle. So staffing is very important. So some recommendations that came from the plan, from Kim Lee Horn, is additional EIT, engineering training, and this advanced signal tech. I want to talk about the signal techs a little bit more in depth, because that is extremely important. We've, going on to kind of experience, right now, our technicians have between six months and two years' experience being a signal tech. This is not something you can go to school This is not something you can go to school for. It's something that's kind of on-the-job training. You can't get an associate's degree. And it requires electrical knowledge, it requires some networking knowledge, it requires some traffic engineering knowledge, and it requires problem solving. You actually got to be able to think through, why is this not working? How do I fix it? So it's a challenge. We have done some training as part of this study, and that's an emphasis that we're gonna continue to do to get them up to speed. But we have to work on getting that advanced knowledge to really help with the system. And then once you have that, we gotta make sure that we're compensating them correctly to keep them here, or if you need to go recruit somebody, to bring them here. And so you see some recommendations there as far as salary pieces, and that bottom least minimum aligns with what the salary market study that they've been doing as well. So that's some information that we got from Kim Lee Horn that aligns with what we're doing. So moving on to the next piece is funding, is capital and maintenance. Before you kind of talk about the, the capital piece, I want to give you an image that we all understand. Is, we all have a vehicle. We understand the idea that we have a capital cost upfront to buy that vehicle, and it has a life cycle of five years, 10 years, depending on what you do. And you're gonna need to be saving money over time so that the time comes, you can purchase that next vehicle. But in the meantime, we have maintenance. We gotta change the oil, we gotta change the tires, we gotta change the battery, and there's gonna be stuff that breaks that we're not expecting. So we need to maintain that. The same thing with our signal system. Currently, we've, from a capital standpoint, from my understanding, the past three years, we've not done any type of capital improvement, infrastructure cost in our signal system. We've done the study this past year, but as far as infrastructure cost, we haven't done that. And so we have laid out a plan through the Halfcent Sales to do one, approximately 1.3 million over the next 10 years to invest the system, and that really kind of brings us back up to a good operating system. But that doesn't even address signal structures, the signal poles, replacing those conduit, those type of things. So I really want to emphasize, we have a plan for 10 years, but we have to continue to invest after those 10 years are done. Otherwise, we end up back where we're at today. So really want to drive that point home. Now, as far as maintenance, you can see that right now we have about $160,000 in our budget for maintenance. The recommendation from the plan is that needs to really be closer to $450,000. So those are things such as, if we have battery backups, we need to replace those batteries every five years. That's part of the maintenance. An example is we have seven battery backups out there today. I believe only six of them are really operational because the batteries are dead. So those are things that we really have to do to maintain our system, keep it operating, and not get to the point we are today. Next slide. So we have staffing, we have funding. Now this plan that has to work together, because you can have the right staff and right fund, but if you're not going in the right direction, again, it's not gonna work well. So we have 12 different projects that will be phased in over these 10 years, and there's a reason for that. Because think of the life cycle, we don't want to replace everything at one time, then it would have to be replaced at the same time. And we do have some good stuff out there today, so it can wait until year eight, nine, or 10 before it needs to get replaced. But if we put a new controller out there in year one, in year 11, it's gonna need to be replaced. Because think of it from the standpoint of, we all have cell phones. Not many of us have a cellphone from 10 years ago. Same thing with our controllers. We need to replace them.
I'm afraid I did, I just got it anyway.
But different projects include the communications. That's year, year one. That's really the foundation to us be able to speak to the intersections, see what's going on, and get information. Equipment upgrades include cabinets, controllers, battery backups, emergency preemption, and vehicle detection. So that gets put in over time. Also, we see signal retiming being recommended every year. So starting with about 15 intersections per year for the first six, and then we can increase that to about 30 intersections per year towards the end of those 10 years. So there's many different components that go together, and it's kind of like an elephant. You gotta eat it one bite at a time, so we gotta start somewhere. I want to speak to the signal performance measures, because that's one of the projects. And I can show you, there's a motto, is why model what you can measure? And within this industry, as we get good communications to their signals, we have the right advanced controller, and we got good detection, we can start getting some information to really help us be more proactive in the system. If you'll go to the next slide. So we have a new signal out there that has communication, the right controller, and good detection. So this is just kind of a before and after. On the left, if you'll hit one more, is you see the red, yellow, green times at an intersection. And then the black dots are vehicles that are saying, I'm here, serve me. We can get this data, and we're able to see all those black dots in the red. We're cutting off platoons of vehicles because of our signal timing. From that, we can also see we have some extra time there in that blue rectangle that we could utilize. So next, on the right, you see we've made an adjustment, there's fewer black dots in the red. So this is the type of information that we can start getting with the system and make more educated decisions for better operations. One more slide, just as another example of these signal performance measures, is same intersection, we had a staff member went through there and said, something wasn't working right. I'm sitting here, doesn't make sense. They knew the day and the time. We could actually go into it, pull up the information for that specific day, that specific time, look at it and say, yes, it doesn't make sense. Let's dig in a little deeper and figure out what's causing the problem. We get those calls all the time, and right now, it's really going out there, and you watch it and like, looks good. It's flowing good now. But we can actually drill down and make educated decisions and be more responsive and proactive for the citizens of Tyler. So what are our next steps? We're gonna do a communication pilot study. So again, that communication is foundation. We've identified cellular routers as the route we want to go, but we want to do a short study to make sure it gives us the bandwidth and the operations that we want. And that will happen probably in the next month or two is the goal, and then as we enter the next fiscal year, we can start deploying those at intersections is our, our plan. Make a decision on our advanced traffic management system. So this is really the central system that we use to house our signal timing to get alerts and process that information. We have a system today, we have planned to upgrade that, and we've looked at five different systems during the course of this study. But we want to make sure that upgrading it is the right thing to do and will put us where we want to be because we could keep what we have and we can accelerate other components of the plan. So we just want to spend a little bit more time on that. Begin the next re-timing projects on 15 intersections, and then upgrade our school zone flasher program, beacons. And so that's actually an action item for you today, and I have three more slides on that, but I want to pause for a minute and give you a chance to ask any questions that you may have on what we have presented so far.
Wow, Cameron, thank you. This is a very in-depth presentation, but I'm still trying to, you know, every time we've had a study or a discussion, traffic is the number one issue in the city, so I'm thrilled that we're addressing it now and that we're gonna do something. Could we go back to that pink slide, that, or red slide, I guess that, yeah. So the red is in the intersection, that cars that are in the intersection?
So this is giving you kind of a timestamp of when vehicles arrive. So those black dots are when people are arriving at the intersection. So that black dot in that red is really you pulling up to the intersection and it's red. If that makes sense.
And you said there's five systems that you're considering now?
So there, there's many different components of the system. The advanced transportation management system, that's kind of your central database, in a sense, that speaks to the intersections and gives us information about the signal timing. Signal performance measures, that can be a standalone system, depending on which vendor you use, or it can be a modular within those, that advanced traffic management central system. So there's different components, but that central system is what, it can drive the decisions on controllers and different type of information. So that's why we need to make it first and decide, do we keep some of what we have, or are we moving away, or is it a mixture?
And what's the timeline for that?
So we have laid that out in this first fiscal year to make that final decision, and procurement is the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do, as much as I would love to see it all done tomorrow, I think your description of doing it 10 years and phasing it in because then it all doesn't deteriorate at the same time actually makes sense. And I have always felt, and have said to the city manager many times, that we need, if we're gonna make this kind of investment, which we absolutely have to make, because Linda's correct, it is the number one issue in this community. We have to make that investment, but I've always said to the city manager, we gotta make sure that we have the staff to handle it and the maintenance budget to handle it every year. And so I'm glad to see that that was part of the study. I wanted it that, to be in the study, and I think that is a very needy component that I don't want us to forget because we need to make sure we're funding that department and someone of your caliber at all times in this community so we can move forward. And so I won't be around for when this is implemented, but I sure hope and pray that we keep 10 years of solid work on this, because it's, it is a big deal. So I'm glad we're to this point that the, the study's done and the implementation is starting. And we're glad you're in Tyler, so thank you.
Thank you.
We are, Cameron, and the presentation was great with the three legs, because some of us didn't understand how it had to fit together, and you made that very clear.
Thank you.
Very detailed.
Mayor Hines?
Thank you.
This is Jennifer. I just wanted to let you know that Councilman McGee has rejoined the meeting via video conference, and so if he'll pause when you take a vote, he will unmute and vote on items.
Sure will. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to ask, the cellular system is something where as technology increases, it's, and bandwidth increases and our needs increase, that it's expandable, it's not just a one-time shot, it's very.
Great question.
That you can modify.
To kind of go in a little bit more in depth. So some of the things we looked at, alternative to that, is a wireless radio system that's high bandwidth that would also tie into several city facilities. Ultimately, and, and fiber, those are some other options to communicating to the traffic signals. Ultimately, we may want to move to that direction for the bandwidth side of things, depending on how it goes. Part of our test with the cellular routers is to make sure that it gives us the bandwidth capacity, and that's widely used within the industry. We're not breaking ground. Tech dot uses it and is deploying that quite frequently. But from a initial cost and get us up quicker, and also lower maintenance for our staff. You start adding in that wireless system, there's a lot of complications and, and knowledge and ability to maintain that and keeping it working. And so one of our approaches is with the cellular router, is it gets us communications faster, lower maintenance right now for our staff, and as we build up that knowledge base, we can kind of expand to something that's a little bit more robust potentially.
Great, thank you, Cameron.
And Cameron, can you just tell the public what they should be seeing first as, as we strive to improve the system?
Absolutely. So I think it, it's gonna take a little time. It's not gonna be immediate. Hopefully, what you've seen with the re-timing on the Beckham Corridor from Fifth to Gentry, and also on the South Broderick Corridor from Chimney Rock up to the Loop, hopefully they have seen and experienced better progression. So as we re-time projects and intersections, they'll experience better progression there. Then as we roll out this communication and start being able to talk to our intersections and be more responsive, we'll be able to make decisions on, do we need to make changes? Can we get alerts on, if detection fails, we can see that and know it ahead of time and respond as opposed to a citizen having to wait there for, you know, how many citizens wait there and don't call, and then somebody does. So we can be more proactive in that standpoint.
Thank you.
Surely any questions?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Broderick, since you're on the line, do you have any questions? I guess not. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I was on mute. What did you say?
Do you have any questions on the traffic?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
So I have three more slides real quick. And we'll go, so today, we have existing school zones. Some are, are static, so you just gotta sign up there, others have beacons. Those are the red dots that you see on that map. So that's the northern half of the city. You see multiple red dots. As you look at the southern half, the next slide is you see the additional red dots. Those are existing beacons today. We have 68 school clocks. So staff have to go out there every year, collect these clocks, they bring them back, they program, hand-program in the schedule, and then redeploy them in the field. So that's a, happens every year. And if something happens like last spring with COVID, they have to go out to each individual location and turn that off, do something so that it's not working. One of the recommendations from the study from Kim Lee Horn was to upgrade this system. It is an early win. That's something that we can do, it's not tied to any of the other projects. It can be a standalone system. They had some recommendations, if you'll go to the next slide, on the, the connectivity, the, the warranty, ease of use, and turnkey solution. So we have, we evaluated several. We selected this one from Applied Information is, and it'll be purchased, if approved, through the Byboard Cooperative, so there's no bidding process that has to take place. And it provides a 10-year connectivity so we can access these remotely. We can change and modify the schedules. It also allows us to be more proactive. It'll give us alerts if a beacon goes out, so you don't have to wait there for somebody to call. We can say, hey, this beacon's gone out, deploy somebody out there and, and fix that. Also, it is, allows for some future connected vehicle applications if we so choose. So that's an option that this system adds. And I think, you know, the, the beacons are enhancement on safety. So this is an investment in safety, but it's also an investment in your other parts of the system because you are reducing staff's need to go out to a site individually. They can focus more on other critical items in moving traffic, because we could have a supervisor or an admin update, change those schedules, as opposed to a technician going out there and doing that in the field. So it gives us a lot of flexibility, efficiency, and be more proactive in the management of these. So with that, the request that we have the council is considering authorizing the purchase of Applied Information's Connected School Beacon System from Paradigm Traffic in the amount of $222,762. And that was approved by Halfcent Board yesterday during that meeting.
Any questions, Cameron, on that item?
How soon could this be implemented?
So we're looking at conservatively, November 1st, we could have that deployed and operational. I'm hopeful that we can get it done sooner because with school starting and COVID, who knows what could potentially happen? You could have a, one school that potentially shuts down or the whole system. So the sooner that we get this out there, the better it's gonna be for us from a staff standpoint. But that would be, I feel like, the last date that we'd have that, hopefully before.
I make a motion that, I think all of us are ready for that motion, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Second.
A motion by McKeller, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman McGee, are you a yes or a no?
I said aye. Did you hear me?
Okay, no, I couldn't hear you, but I, I did then.
Okay.
So everyone voted in favor, no against. So Cameron, thank you very much.
Thank you for what you're doing, Cameron.
Yeah, we're.
Happy to move forward with this.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Cameron.
M. 2.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tiffany.
I am Tiffany Curry with Tyler Water Utilities. Agenda item M. 2 is the bid for open-cut reroute package, which is a part of the Consent Decree Group One work. The Group One assessment was completed in 2017. There were 379 line segments that were identified as needing some form of remediation, which included approximately 5,700 linear feet of CIPP, cured and placed pipe, which is now complete. That's on your consent agenda for today. Approximately 35,000 linear feet. Uh, approximately thirty-five-thousand linear feet, um, a pipe bursting package, which is ongoing. It is nearing an end. One-hundred-and-forty-seven point repairs in the point repair package, which is also ongoing and nearing an end. And then just over four-thousand linear feet in the open-cut package. Twenty-nine linear feet of that gravity main is complete. It is on the consent agenda for today. Approximately twelve-hundred linear feet of that gravity main that was identified as part of the remedial measures had to be pulled out of the original package. It needed to be rerouted. We couldn't remove it and replace it in place for various reasons. Um, it had to be rerouted. That's what we are bringing to you today. So we accepted bids for that. We received two, two bids. The low bidder was Reynolds and Kay at one-million-fifty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seven dollars. The second bid was CAPS, Capco Construction, one-million-three-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty dollars. So the recommendation to council today is that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Reynolds and Kay in the amount of one-million-fifty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seven dollars for the open-cut reroute package.
Thank you very much. I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll open it up for questions from the council members. Uh, one thing that, uh, I always find very interesting, and, and I always ask this question, and with you being new, you might not be ready for this question. But as we look at, uh, really increasing these water revenue bonds, right? But what I've found from the initial, the initial numbers that the consultant put together, uh, that we always seem to run seventy to eighty percent of what those projections were. So how, so I'm, I'm, I'm also looking at Paul, right?
Yes.
Just to kind of as a backup, so what was the planned cost of this originally in, in the thought process? And are we still hitting that seventy to eighty percent?
That's a great question. I will defer to Paul.
I figured you would since you're new. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No problem. Th- this first phase, we're, I think that's gonna end up being the true, the, the, where we are. It might be a little, little bit higher than that, but we do have, if you remember in year three, last year, we accelerated all that large diameter inspection.
Yes, sir.
And that was also included in the consultant's cost. But judging, or what we're finding is just where those lines are and the type of work that's required, that component looks like it's actually gonna be quite a bit more than we initially thought.
Oh, really? Okay. Right.
We, we need to play it conservative still at this point, I, I believe in terms of these numbers.
Fair enough.
Yes.
Thank you for answering the question. And thank you for, um, presenting the bid package. Are there any other questions?
No. Move to approve M two.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. All in, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Uh, there are no opposed votes, uh, so it does pass. And I gave McKeller that because y'all have talked twice now on seconds.
And is this young lady, can you tell us who she is and what she does?
Oh, well, come, come back up.
Tiffany.
Present your, uh, tell us all about you.
I'm not. I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar, so.
No problem. Thank you. I am Tiffany Curry. I am a newer hire in Tyler Water Utilities, so I'm helping with the consent decree projects as well as miscellaneous utilities projects. I'm an engineer. That's my background.
Thank you very much.
Yes, very nice to meet you.
So many people come to the podium that it's.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you Tiffany. Glad to have you aboard.
And yeah, Cameron, it was only his second time.
Thank you.
Uh, as well, right, Cameron?
Yeah, I wanted to know if we could have Cameron's telephone number.
Yeah. He probably didn't wanna give his cellphone out.
Don't leave Cameron.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, Kedrick, M three?
Old face for you all then. Do I need to introduce myself?
Kedrick, I'll take your telephone.
Mayor Council, you have, uh, item M three before you. It's our quarterly report ending June thirtieth. And I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. I know we've had a lengthy meeting today and I'll, so I'll run through these pretty quickly. If you have any questions, uh.
No, I'm, I'm trying to run it to, I mean to.
I, I know you like numbers.
Past twelves of this.
So we'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. We've got a, a PowerPoint up there for you. And our revenues, these basically compare actual to actuals for the same period a year before. It also compares our budget to what, uh, we're projecting to end the fiscal year with as well. The general fund, we're expecting revenues to be about one-point-two-seven million less than budget. And that's largely due to, uh, our methane gas sales are down, fines and penalties are down. Of course, as expected with COVID-nineteen going on. Initially, uh, in prior forecasts, we were showing that our sales tax was gonna be down. And Ed, uh, city manager, mentioned earlier that we had an audit correction, uh, last month, which pretty much brings us back to budget on our, on our sales tax. Also, the departments have done a great job. Oh, okay. Well, we, we, we've got, uh, good news today. We're over eleven percent up, uh, for the, the, uh, payment that we're gonna receive this coming Friday. So the current period is actually a little over four percent up, which I think is very promising when you look at, when you take out audit corrections, future payments, uh, and po- or past payments, and just look at the current period, it gives you a good idea that, uh, what's going on. And, and it, it appears that, uh, people are still getting out, uh, and, and spending the dollars that they need to spend, and so we're, we're seeing that reflected.
I got a question on what you just said. You, you said it's up eleven, but there's four percent increase. Is there a seven percent adjustment? During these times, um, it makes, uh, uh, these numbers always make me very nervous, right? Whenever you get in difficult times, the comptroller is the one that is actually controlling those numbers. And so we had a minus twenty, and then they turned around and refunded us eighteen percent of that.
Eighteen percent, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, yes.
It was a, it was an audit, an audit correction.
An audit adjustment.
Right.
Down twenty on, on an audit adjustment. No, no, down twenty, then, then an audit adjustment, up eighteen. And so now we're in a month that we just have four percent new and another audit of seven to the positive.
It's, it's a combination of.
So that can easily be taken away next month, uh, during these uncertain times, that could be a minus. We, we have no idea.
If you have all the questions in the past, negative audit question, which is.
Correct.
But typically that's a negative, so it's can't usually.
Right. So we don't know. It's great news. I'm not, I don't want to take away the great news, but I also don't want to.
It's only a four percent for, uh, period of, uh, this August of June, so hooray.
I mean, it might be, it might be a surprise to y'all, but I'm somewhat a pessimist. I didn't know if you knew that.
But the great news is, is it's up for now.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Also, uh, the, on the expenditure side, we have been able to cut, uh, expenditures or come in, forecast to come in below budget by about one-point-two million, uh, as well. Uh, that excludes our transfers. Uh, if you include the transfers, that number's a little higher. On our transit side, we normally provide a match, uh, for the local match for transit grant. And some of the federal funding with the COVID dollars has helped to offset that, and that saved us about four-hundred-thousand dollars. And it, and it will save us about that, uh, in next year's budget as well.
Yeah, that's good.
So, uh, since we're able to, uh, kind of make up for what we, we've lost in revenues, the, the, the COVID dollars has helped with, uh, the transfer there. One of the things that we're gonna ask you all to do is to transfer during the budget process, to transfer five-hundred-thousand dollars to our rainy day fund, uh, just to kind of set aside some dollars in the future in case some bad things happen and we, and we need to dig into, into those dollars. Because we ended last year with a pretty good unreserved fund balance, so. So having said that, I'll, I'll move on to water utilities if we don't have any.
When we say it's a, a, a good amount, I want to make sure that, uh, that it's defined. I mean, you're, you're talking about three million in the reserve fund now.
Oh, the rainy day fund.
The rainy day fund.
It has approximately about, uh, it's a little over six million, so.
Six million, okay. Oh, yeah, we put it.
We, we put three million in their la- last fiscal year during budget.
You own gas and then the three million, six million.
Right.
Okay, good.
That's just, that's an insurance policy.
Yes, I understand. That's truly, uh, uh, so when you said it's a good balance, I didn't want it to be misconstrued.
That was the word I wanted.
I know you like insurance.
A couple other entities that seem to have, uh, huge dollars in them. Uh, that's not huge dollars for us, but that's a significant.
Right, right.
Cash fund for us, but it's not.
And I, I think, I think if we can.
It's not a high percentage.
It's not thirty or forty percent that we're seeing under the reserve.
That's correct, because.
Remember the budget graph that showed this kind of the line you were in from your decision?
If it's.
Now you go through something like that.
Because if it's taxpayers' money, then it needs to be spent and then it need to be set aside. But, uh, uh, that applies to our mandatory reserve funds. And it'll actually be cash now, so that's, that's a good move, so.
Yes, sir.
Sorry for that.
That's okay. Uh, we'll move on to water utilities. Uh, we're expecting revenues to be two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand greater than budget. Uh, actually, the newer numbers is a little bit better than that. Uh, we're kind of going into a dry period right now. And so we expect those revenues to be a little bit better. Also, on the expenditure side, uh, looks like the departments are forecasting to come in about eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand less than budget. Solid waste, uh, if there's no questions there, we'll move on to solid waste. We're expecting revenues to be about almost six-hundred-thousand greater than budget. And a lot of that is due to our commercial activity, in particular, the roll-offs. Uh, also, we're expecting, uh, expenditures to be a little bit greater than budget as well. Uh, that's just landfill cost. Uh, we're still waiting on some of the trucks to come in. I think there was a delay just because of the COVID crisis. So some of our maintenance is still a bit higher than we would like for it to be. So we'll, we'll continue to watch that fund real closely. Our airport fund, uh, we're expecting, uh, revenues to be about three-hundred-and-four-thousand greater than budget. And the reason why, uh, you intuitively, you would think that, that one should be down, the CARES grant money is, is figured in there, so that's, that was a lifesaver. Uh, from the standpoint of, had we not had those dollars, we would've had to look for other funds to help subsidize the airport operation. So, uh, expenditures are expected to be about a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand less than budget, and we'll continue to monitor that fund closely as well. Uh, we'll move on to development services. Uh, revenues are expected to be about two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand less than budget. Uh, expenditures are expected to be, uh, about forty-five thousand less than budget. And then, uh, the last one that we'll touch, and there's more funds in your package, but, hotel motel fund, that is definitely a fund, as city manager mentioned earlier, that we are monitoring, um, with the COVID-nineteen crisis. We're just seeing, uh, those revenues being decimated there. So hopefully, uh, we'll kind of work out of this thing and the, and those revenues will return to where they were in the past, but it's probably gonna take a little bit of, little bit of time. But we're expecting revenues to be about one-point-three less than budget. And expenditures, we're expecting, uh, to be about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand less than budget. So having said that, that concludes, uh, the revenue expenditure report for the quarter ending June thirtieth. And with your permission, we would ask that you approve this report.
Any questions, uh, Kedrick? Yeah, uh, it, I, I will just say one thing. I mean, uh, it, um, goes without saying, but, um, I, I'd, I'd say two things. Number one, uh, uh, it's just the incredible operations of, uh, our staff, and Kedrick and the budget staff, but also all the, uh, department heads, that once we, uh, saw the unexpected COVID issue, uh, they all jumped in and started, uh, looking at their budgets to see how we could end the year, right around even on our budget. One thing that I've always said is, City of Tyler, when we sit around and we say that it runs as close to business as possible, I mean, it does because most government agencies, once you actually, uh, vote on a budget and there's expenditures, it's, every penny's gonna get spent, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, but here, uh, uh, the operation that y'all do, and it's just the entire organization, the culture of it, y'all, uh, to make sure that we end a, a budget year, uh, uneven, is so greatly appreciated by the public, uh, what y'all do. And I, the second thing I'd like to say, I mean, it's, it's obvious with the hotel occupancy tax, being that, uh, the revenue's at one-point-three and less. Uh, that is why the, uh, uh, the work on the Rose Garden area that we had all been so excited about and wanted to, to get started, uh, right away. But, but that, this has caused a pause for us until we make sure that those numbers are stabilized because we, we want to use good judgment with our, um, all our business backgrounds plus all the, the staff's suggestions that we just need to, to move carefully on that. We want to do it.
Yes.
And we will do it, but we want to make sure that we understand the numbers and where they are prior to starting a big project like that.
Yes, sir.
So.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by McKeller.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I heard Broderick say aye. Okay, so, O one?
O one is the.
Say your third time.
Here we go. The adoption of the private lateral ordinance. Uh, so I'm gonna explain to you what a private lateral is, talk to you a little bit about our private lateral repair program, and then share with you about the ordinance itself. So a private lateral is a pipe that connects a resident's home or business to the city of Tyler's sanitary sewer system. Private property owners are responsible for the maintenance of the private laterals. What does this have to do with the consent decree? Defects in the private lateral system cause inflow and infiltration, which we often refer to as INI. And that is simply when extraneous flows enter the sanitary sewer system. Storm sewer runoff, uh, groundwater, when those flows get into the collection system, it reduces the capacity of the system and it can result in sanitary sewer overflows, which is a problem for us. The private lateral repair program's primary purpose is to reduce wet weather INI as part of the remedial measures portion of the consent decree. INI enters a collection system typically through, um, three avenues. Gravity mains, manholes, and private laterals. We have approximately six-hundred-and-eighty miles in the city of Tyler of gravity mains and almost that much in private lateral lines. So you all are well, well aware of the work that has been going on in Tyler Water Utilities along with, uh, the consent decree to improve our gravity mains and manholes. And now we are ready to move to the next step, which is the private laterals. The private lateral repair program has a few different components. First is the condition assessment. For basins eight and fifteen, the condition assessment has already been completed, which gives us an idea of what the condition of those private laterals are in those basins. Next is the adoption of the private lateral ordinance, which is why I'm here to talk to you today. And then, um, the, the next step would be the private lateral repair, and we do intend on starting in basins eight and fifteen. And I will return next month to give you more details about that, um, and move forward with those repairs. The private lateral ordinance is simply to reaffirm what most property owners already know. The private lateral ordinance is simply to reaffirm what most property owners already know, that the private lateral is their responsibility to maintain and repair. We took the time to define within that ordinance exactly what a private lateral is, and try to provide clarity around what the property owner is responsible for maintaining and repairing, as well as defining what a private lateral defect is. Um, basically, anything that allows extraneous flow into the collection system is a defect. Could be a missing cleanout cap, um, all the way up to a completely collapsed line. Uh, another very important aspect of the private lateral ordinance is that there is a provision that will allow the city, uh, to set up a financial assistance program that would be able, uh, to benefit citizens that may not have the funds to improve or repair their own private laterals. The recommendation is that the city council adopt the private lateral ordinance, amending Tyler City Code, Chapter nineteen, Article one, Section nineteen, in order that we can, um, adhere to the EPA consent decree. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question for you. When it comes to, uh, the last item that you discussed that there would, the city would provide financial assistance through a, an assistance program, would that come through Neighborhood Services? Would that be funded out of?
Program has not been fully detailed out. The ordinance gives us the option to provide such a program, and what we would like to do is, um, see if there's even really a need. Um, but yes, we would absolutely partner with Neighborhood Services to move that forward.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so, uh, I've got some questions. So, has the assessment's been done?
Yes, sir.
In basins eight and fifteen?
Yes.
And we know that those were, uh, they're very old basins.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, that, that we've spent a bulk of the money so far in those two basins, right? Uh, where much of those lines are seventy-five to a hundred years old, I would imagine, right?
They are.
Okay, so, uh, you've done an assessment, and so, what kind of money are we looking at? I mean, it, basically, the private sector.
Yes.
Uh, homeowners have to, and this is part of the consent decree, that we have to do this, right?
Yes, sir. This, this contributes to reducing our INI, which is, and SSOs, which are addressed directly in the consent decree.
Right. So, uh, when you made an assessment, what did it look like?
So what we anticipate the repairs for basins eight and fifteen will look like is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And a per household estimate?
Um, I'm not sure if we have a per household estimate. Our engineer is here, I believe. Do you know, do we have a per household estimate of what that looks like?
We don't have that for the per household.
We don't. But our intention is that the city would pay for the first round of these repairs, since it is, of course, a part of the consent decree. Um, and then moving forward in the future, should there need to be additional repairs, it would be the responsibility of the homeowner.
So, Mr. Tiffany, you said that this financial assistance program would assist them if they cannot afford it?
Yes, sir.
Is there a guideline, or can they just say, I can't afford it?
There will be guidelines. Um, again, those guidelines are not fully detailed out yet, because it is our intention that the city would pay for the first phase of, of these improvements, so there wouldn't be a need. Uh, but there will absolutely be guidelines that will be put in place.
If you may, let me bring you back, take you back to the slide ahead, just kind of example of the lateral line.
Yes. So can we go back?
Jennifer? Uh, Jennifer, Jennifer, take the slideshow back to there was a picture of a house and the line.
I believe it's slide, yes.
Kind of work the council through, but we're going to do a first initial phase, and then what, what happens after we're officially done with this, uh, the, the private company are purely considering.
Absolutely. So you can see, in the street is our, our main, that the city of Tyler ma- maintains. We care for that. From the main, all the way to the home is considered the private lateral. Um, and it, it is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain and repair that. Um, however, because we are under a consent decree and we want to move this project forward, we do propose that the city pay for these repairs in this first phase, as we go through and make repairs, to the private lateral. And you'll notice that the lower lateral, which is closest to the main, from the, uh, property line to the gravity main, typically, the city does those repairs, because we don't want private residents working out in the, in the street, correct?
Yes.
So then we're talking about property line to house?
Yes, ma'am. It's all the private lateral, but the upper lateral, where they would physically make the repairs, is the upper lateral, which is the property line to the home.
Except for the cleanout.
To, to the cleanup, correct.
And this is because of, because of the decree, as I mentioned earlier, we have to twenty twenty-seven to have all of this done throughout the city. And so, if, as we just continue to evaluate, it also becomes a less to, you know, the, the, the private property owner, when we find out EPA, we, uh, so we have to get this, figure out ways to get this.
Ken, uh, I'd like to get a, um, I'd like to get the consultant to get us some more detail.
Sure, absolutely.
On that.
Yes.
Uh, then I, I want detail on how many houses we're looking at and kind of what we do.
Just in those two basins, though?
Yeah, to, to start with, because I, I, I'm gonna, I want to, no, if we're looking at, uh, working, uh, to the point of the cleanout, I mean, because I, I, if we're working to a point of cleanout, that's one thing. I don't really, personally, don't think that we ought to be working on the lines underneath the house.
They, they won't be underneath the house. You won't be going under any length of the homes.
Correct.
Essentially, it runs up to, you know, from the cleanout to essentially to the, to their lines for the house, and that, no, it won't go into the house or into the house.
Correct.
Right, and so they're gonna.
The INI still occur, though, from this.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, um, I'd like to have a better understanding of that, by the way, because, uh, does, does the ordinance outline that it is only going to go to the cleanout?
Yes, sir. It defines what the.
Go ahead and come back to the mic. Sorry.
Yes, sir. It defines that the private lateral is from the main to the, to the cleanout, which is that location at the home. So there won't be, there won't be any excavation or work that would be under the home or internal in any way.
So we're, we're just taking it from generally, yeah, uh, uh, generally from the property line just to the, to a cleanout, is where we're working, because there's, the infiltration is where you're worried about a cleanout not having a cover. And if a cleanout doesn't have a cover, and it starts raining, there's tons of infiltration.
Absolutely, that's, that is, that is one defect that is critical, yes, very important.
That would, uh, you can, let me talk to your consultant behind you.
Okay.
State your name.
Yes, sir.
For the record, please.
Carter Delaney, thirteen eighteen East Dulcey, here in Tyler, Texas.
Yeah, I've heard about you.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I will say, really quickly, there are six.
Capacity are you here?
So I'm with Adams Engineering, uh, who is a consultant, working with Tyler Water Technologies on the private sector. Yes, sir.
Okay. So tell me the, um, what were your findings generally?
So.
For the infiltration.
So we based this all off of smoke testing that was done by Jim Forbes and Pipeline Analysis. So he's done that in basins eight and fifteen, and there are six correctable defects that he found. And I'll go over those really quickly. It's replace cleanout cap, and we're install a T cone, so it's just an open hole. It just needs to be covered.
Right.
Or it's a repair, that's the first one. The second one is just repair the, the cleanout, so it's been broken, it's been hit by a lawnmower or something like that, and so it's been broken. That's the second one. The third one is, there's an abandoned service line underground that they were able to find through their smoke testing, so that would have to be disconnected from the main. That's the third one. The fourth one is more serious, and it, it involves CCTVing, so getting a camera into the private sewer line to see where the defects are, how, how extensive it is, is it collapsed in multiple places, or, or whatever it may be. So that's a little more extensive CCTV. Um, another one, the last, or the, the fifth one is disconnect yard drains. So, uh, there are a couple of places, unfortunately, only two, where yard drain, so it drains the yard, actually, actually ties into the sewer system, which is not good. Um, and then the last one were just, there were some exposed private laterals out there. So the, the pipe, for whatever reason, was exposed and not, not underground. Uh, so that would be, uh, finding those and then covering them up, um. So then there's not infiltration of those pipes. There's six.
Do we know, like, in basin eight, how many we're talking about?
So across both basins, there are three hundred and fifty-nine correctable defects, okay? So three hundred and fifty-nine, uh, across those two basins, and they're spread out in all kinds of different areas. That's houses. This is all residential, correct? And, and when they smoke test, they're smoke testing from the main and essentially to the cleanout. They don't, they don't go investigate in houses, so that's where the smoke testing stopped, is at the cleanout at the house.
Right.
Um, so fifty percent of those correctable issues, so out of all the correctable issues, fifty percent are to replace the cap on a cleanout, or put in a T cone. Anyways, either way, get that hole covered up. So majority of them are very simple. The cap's been removed for whatever reason, just go in and put a new cap in. So it's not a, it's not a very time or time, it doesn't take about a time, a lot of time or money.
But at this point, we don't know about money.
So we're, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand is what we're estimating to, to cover all of these three hundred and fifty-nine defects in basins eight and fifteen. So majority of them are just those covers, and then seventeen percent are broken cleanouts, so that takes a little bit more work, uh, to replace those, reconstruct those. Ten percent are disconnect abandoned lines.
Yeah, that's, that's really interesting. I, I didn't even think about that, because they could just be old lines that, uh, that are just underground.
Yes, sir.
That a plumber thirty years ago came in and said, dude, we're just doing a brand new line.
Yes, sir.
Right? So when you're closing those off, I guess the easiest place to do that is near the property line, right?
Yes.
You just cut them off?
So, yes, the disconnect abandoned service would be at the property line. That's where we would go to, to disconnect.
Yeah, because you don't want to take the street up to do that, because that would cause a lot more money. So that's, you said that's ten percent, and that's probably fairly expensive.
That one, and then the, the most expensive one out of all of them, which I hadn't got to yet, is about twenty-one percent of them are the CCTV, the service, and then repair and replace where needed. So those are the ones that smoke test was done, and, you know, smoke came out of this area, but there's, there's, Pipeline Analysis did not put cameras up all these private laterals. They just did use smoke. Um, so it would be more intensive work, you know, digging up, getting into the private lateral with a camera, seeing the extent of the damage, and then repairing or replacing as you found, as we find defects.
And how many houses?
So that's a, that's a very small percent. So that's seventy-five of the three hundred and fifty-nine correctable, um, defects. So seventy-five of the three hundred and fifty-nine. So there's seventy-five locations out there where we'd need to get a camera in and really do some more detail. And so the, the breakdown of those, we consider those to be the most expensive, maybe around three thousand dollars. So for every seventy, seventy-five one of those, I think it may, it could cost up to three thousand dollars to get a camera, get a plumber in with a camera, to go in and, you know, then dig up, um, and make replacement and repairs as needed.
So the homeowner would just hire a private plumber to come to do this?
Which, yes, ma'am. So your ordinance right now says that it's theirs to maintain, and so they would do that now anyways, yes.
Right, basin eight and fifteen, we're going to do it for it. The city's going to do it for it.
That is the intention, yes, ma'am.
I really missed that, but where are these two basins located in the city? I did not think about that. Do you have enough?
I do.
So all three areas.
That's, uh, kind of downtown, around, uh, and then, uh, uh, in the fairground area.
Okay.
They're the very, I mean, they're obviously the very oldest pipes.
I don't know if that works.
They did really. So you're, you're saying out of the three fifty, about two twenty-five is the unknown. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, because you said about three thousand for seventy-five of them is, is unknown. And we're, we're being required to do this by, uh, the consent decree. So, um.
To clarify.
Yep.
On the, to, to kind of put that, that in magnitude, the, the consent decree does not include the private laterals. If you read the consent decree, they're not mentioned in there. The problem is the INI that's caused, that causes.
Yeah, right.
The SSO, right, and, and the estimate, the, the rule of thumb is about a third comes from private laterals, about a third from the manholes, and about a third from the gravity mains. So we're, we are addressing the manholes and gravity mains already. But the private, and, and that's why we're thinking this first round, that we, that we as a city pay for that, because the total cost that we're looking at for basin eight and fifteen is at three hundred and fifty thousand range. We're, we projected that, like you said, those are the oldest basins, or some of the oldest basins, some of the oldest lines.
Right.
We're over, we're between two and three million for the entire city is what we're anticipating. So if you look at bang for our buck for INI reduction.
Yeah, of one-third, yeah.
It's here.
Yeah, I think that's true.
So I just wanted to kind of frame that.
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, yeah, that's the least expensive work we're going to do. But I, I mean, I obviously have, I, I guess a couple of concerns. As, number one, this is, we're actually going to be on people's private property.
Yes, sir.
Doing something, right? So I want to make sure we're very cautious and respectful of those, uh, private property owners.
Absolutely.
But number two, I mean, uh, uh, I have an issue to somewhat extent. I mean, everyone, um, you know, I, I can understand, uh, people not having caps on their sewers and, you know, things happening to that line over time. Uh, but there again, there's some personal responsibility that people have to take care of their stuff, too. Um, and, uh, but then if we start talking, um, let's say someone bought a home, and twenty to thirty years ago, uh, a plumber changed a pipe in the sewer connection, that current homeowner would have no reason to know that. Uh, there's no inspection when they buy the house that would inform them, so I definitely think, uh, those are, are something that we should be paying for. Uh, but I do understand the gravity of us in a rush to get this infiltration under control. If one-third is coming from these private lines, that, that's why we'd go fix a cap or fix a, a, a cleanout, because that's obviously the only location, uh, that a major infiltration should occur. Um, unless you have, like you said, in seventeen percent of them or, or whatever, there's a line that's going in the sewer that shouldn't be there. That's obviously an easy one, too, because in the backyard, there could be just a hole in the yard, and that stuff just, water's just running, not stuff, actual water running through the line. Um, so I do think those, those are reasonable, but I, I also don't want to get away from the fact that, especially if we're looking at, um, uh, people that own these properties for investments, they have some responsibilities for taking care of it. Uh, and so do homeowners. Uh, and, uh, so I'm willing to bend a little bit, uh, uh, because we need to get the infiltration stuff under control. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't like bending from the idea that there's personal responsibility that private owners need to be taking care of their stuff.
Yes, sir. And we have been working.
And I don't really like being on their property.
Of course.
I guess my concern, and I didn't realize we were going to get this Jeep into this and trying to understand it, is setting precedent, paying for eight and fifteen, but then saying to the rest of the city, you're on your own, you know, uh.
Yeah, yeah, jump on in.
Bugging me about it. So we haven't got to the point that we said the rest of the city is on its own. Uh, we still have to go through those studies, and we may come back. And this is kind of where the mayor's bending piece comes into play, is what you're looking at, just because of the clock you're under, uh, or we're all are under, uh, we have to be able to take care of this one. But after it's done, it is, and this is what your ordinance is clearly setting out, is this is your private property responsibility, now that we have made you aware of it. Now that we have. Now that we have found this is an issue and fixed this, because this is, essentially it's on your private property, but what's happening, the water from your private property is affecting our wastewater system, and the EPA is on our backs about that private, that water coming from your private property into our lines. And we could take a-
We just have five years left.
Yes, and we could take a, kind of a, kind of a, a legal fight with each of the different property owners, but now you're stuck in litigation period timeframe in order to try to force them to fix it themselves versus us just paying towards it.
Then we're going to spend two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand in Deborah's department. Right? So, yeah, I, I understand. I do understand.
Yes, sir.
But I, I, I just want, I just, I just wanted to do a deep dive into this.
Absolutely.
Because this is a little bit different.
It is different, and I think it will be important.
The ordinance is going to clearly state that if we do this work, you're on notice as a property owner of any type of ownership, that you're going to have to come back and you're going to be, have to monitor this. And you're going to have to repair it. We're, we're, we're fixing it just because of the consent decree. But I don't want to do anything on the other side of the cleanout.
Absolutely. We won't, that, we will not be doing that.
Yeah, I don't want to do any of that work.
So we're, we're not changing city code, or we are changing city code?
We are, we are adding and amending. So there is a slide, if you could back up maybe two slides. It, go forward one slide, right there. So we added a definition of what a private lateral is. We added a definition of what maintenance and repairs might look like. And we defined what a private lateral defect is. And we also added the ability for the city to have a financial assistance program in there. It does not, it's, this is not changing the intent of our current code.
Yeah, and the, here, here's what, if, if you're going to have any sort of financial assistance program in the future, I don't want it on the other side of the cleanout.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I, I do not want it to apply to people's sewer underneath their house.
Right, right.
Uh, because that, that is a bad precedent. I mean, that would be too much. Because basically the access to any sort of cleanout is on the outside of the house. That's why it's an outside cleanout.
Yes, that is correct.
But we don't want, uh, I, I don't want to be providing financial assistance or doing the work people underneath their, either their pier and beam or definitely top below the concrete slab.
Yes, we are in complete agreement.
Okay.
Yes.
And so this ordinance is basically going to be defining what the private lateral is and that the owner has a maintenance and repair requirement going from the future from the point that we do work up to the cleanout. And, but they have responsibility of the whole thing in order to keep away from us having to do the work in the future. Plus, we can have discussions with them if we see that there is INI. In the future, we can tell them that, look, you got to fix it because you're, you're hurting your neighbors collectively.
That is exactly correct, and we have already partnered with Luanne Campbell to start on a communication piece to educate the public so that they understand, even though we are funding this, this first phase of repairs, it is the private property owner's responsibility.
But if, if you get onto a piece of property and you do this camera work and you see that somebody's sewer pipe is broken underneath their house, we're not fixing it.
We're not going to camera.
You can notify them of that, and then they have to go through the proper, because the health department actually gets involved in monitoring some of that because of the health and safety of the people that live in the house. But I don't want to, I want you all to just tell me right now, you're, you're not going to spend the money to do that.
We will not be doing that.
Okay, good.
Well, and some of that would play into their homeowner insurance policy depending on the cause of the loss and-
That's correct.
So.
But I just, I can live with all this if, under everything I just said.
Yes, sir. We will not be working under homes. Inspections will stop at the cleanout.
Do we not have the same thing for water lines that go from this street to the house the homeowner has?
That is their responsibility.
That's true.
So this is just adding the sewer line?
Yes, and clarifying it, because it's always been the case that the private property owner is responsible for the private lateral. We're just clarifying that.
We did not have a definition before.
We did not have the definition, so we need the definition.
Thank you.
So we can notify homeowners of that. But I, I would, yeah, I, and, you know, I, I think most homeowners would, that have broken caps on their cleanout or broken cleanout pipes are not going to be upset that we're coming in and solving it. Some are going to get mad about their shrub that you're going to have to remove to fix it.
Yes.
But generally speaking, they'll be understanding. Okay.
Thank you, Tiffany, for educating us.
Absolutely. Very good questions. Thank you.
And I move to approve.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We have a motion.
Zero dash one.
Second.
And a motion, motion by Sellers, a second by McKeller, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the ayes.
Aye.
Thank you all.
And I, and I was really joking that I wanted the meeting to go after twelve. I didn't really want to, but when, you know, when it gets into private property stuff, I get very, my radar increases.
Yep.
So. Hello, Mr. Butler. Oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Butler is on an important HUD call today, and I'm standing in his stead for him.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So no, I'm not Mr. Butler this morning. Good morning, Mayor and Councilwoman, Chief Manager. Um, the city of Tyler has a partnership with HUD to assist low-income families, the elderly and disabled members of the community to afford decent, safe and sanitary housing. Um, this program is called the Housing Choice Voucher Program. I am before you today to ask that you accept the agency's plans, which consist of an annual plan as well as a five-year plan. In order to continue to operate the program, these plans must be developed, accepted and submitted to HUD. Staff based on daily operations and input from participants and the community monitor, review and update these plans annually. Additionally, HUD requires that a residential advisory board review the plans with the agency. The residential advisory board consists of members of the community that are currently participating in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The meeting that was required by HUD was held virtually on June the twelfth, twenty twenty, and an additional forty-five days public comment period was held in, in accordance with the guidelines from HUD. During the public comment period, we received one person that had two comments. The first comment was requesting to change the application process on how to apply to be a part of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The second request was to ask that we build homes near hospitals, banks and grocery stores. The first request, I'd like to explore a little bit with you. The applicant is asking that we go, or the person is asking that we go to a first come, first served type basis. So when we open up the application process, if you're there right when we open and you submit your application first, then you're first on the list. Um, I kind of liken this to the whole Black Friday frenzy. And what we saw when we had that program in place is that people would camp out at the facility and wait to submit their application. This puts the elderly as well as the disabled at a disadvantage because they're not able or capable of being able to do that. We moved to the lottery system program, which allows us to open up the application process over a matter of days. You submit it through a computer program. The computer actually selects people randomly, puts it in order based on some preferences that we've set in accordance with the guidelines from HUD, and then they number it one through two thousand. We received twenty-two hundred applications the last time we opened up the process. We pulled from that application process the first one fifty as lotteryed by the computer. So that gave everyone that was veterans or disabled or elderly an opportunity to actually compete against people that are more physically capable of camping out. So we are not considering making that change, although that was one of the requests.
Please never go back to that one.
Okay. And so the other comment that was made about building homes, this program actually does not build homes. This is the program that provides a subsidy or assistance to rental assistance and/or home mortgage assistance, depending if you go into home ownership. So we can partner with the Community Development Block Grant Program for building homes and consider that if there is property available near those areas. But what we've addressed in the five-year plan is a partnership with the Tyler Area Builders Association, the Tyler Area Realtors Association, and maybe even trying to develop a partnership with the landlords in the community to see if they would allow their new bills or the current bills to become a part of this program so that the people will have a choice to take their voucher to those rental properties that would be near hospitals, grocers or banks. So that's the way we addressed it in the five-year plan.
I, I think that is a great way to address it.
Okay, great.
And I would love to see more of that happen.
Yes.
Because I've, I've always wanted to see more of a multiplier effect, instead of us just building one house, partnering with those organizations so we could, instead of building one, you can build five.
Right, right.
Right? So I've always wanted to see that. It was never successful, but I'd, I'd like to see it, so that's a good goal to have.
Well, we're building twelve by the fire station.
I know you are.
But, um, the next-
We actually do have a multiplier effect there, but not, not as big as we could have.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So our next-
And it's not your fault. It's more my fault, so you go ahead.
We're ready. Okay. The next step is to receive approval as required by HUD from the city council, and this approval is by way of ordinance, so you'll have to approve this ordinance. Once this ordinance is approved, the city manager will be asked to execute the certifications as well as submit the required plans to HUD, and then they will review it and accept it and then provide funding for future years for us. Do you have any further questions?
No. Any other questions?
So moved.
A motion by Shirley.
Second.
Second by Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Broderick?
Thank you.
Aye.
Yeah, I heard, I didn't hear you. I heard you that time. Thank you. Uh, now we're on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled or discussed?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook. A second by-
Second.
Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
I move, we weigh in with the city manager.
Yes.
I would be glad to back away.
Sorry. Sorry, you've been up here long.
There's missing opportunities for bragging. That's all.
Okay. You want a motion for you? You want to, or you want to let him do it?
No, no, there's nothing, there's, y'all, go home.
Okay, good. Let's do that. We are jerk. So for y'all that have lunch meetings, you're only halfway to lunch.